Well. Hands up, who you're talking to. I, you know, it was in the thirties yesterday. I thought they had a little snow in the morning. And it started.
Salimo.
And I don't know.
I know. I that's really important. They live.
Where is that?
I don't know. And they say it's cold.
Yeah, it's been. Pretty cold. Last week they had all three of them.
It must have been. I try not to talk to them. But they call it that next.
Speed over.
But I also think.
Yeah, no.
I don't want.
No, of course, definitely. Well, I may as well buy. That's. Yeah, so how was snow? Crazy, got two snows. Well, which I see. You know.
Sorry, I shot it back.
I said, you know, it's always. And I'm just trying to. I don't know what's this. So I don't know. It's a big, long spread.
Yeah, I hear you. But. Oh, it's not. Shouldn't. You never know. She's not a slow camera. That's a good one that went down. It's pretty great. I'm beyond.
Yes. Yes.
And so here. Three. It's not like that's.
Oh. Yeah, I did, I did.
All you know.
Okay. Mayor Mitchell, here. Vice Mayor Bravo, here. Councilman Buss.
Present.
Councilman Behad.
Here.
Councilman Buss, yes.
Yeah.
There is a forum present. Okay, great. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for. All agreeing that we have some time to kind of workshop discuss issues other than our regular city council meetings. So let's get started with the end location by Councilman Walter Kippe.
We pray this evening to the agenda sit forward before us. And as a we be granted the ability to work together in harmony. There's honest this agreement and the sun. We ask for the strength to speak up when given the opportunity to speak, but the patience to listen receptively and emphatically when it's time to listen. We ask for the wisdom to govern and to complete any interests and issues of the encounter and the keen sense of the welfare and needs of our residents. And then we be reminded that we are not only leaders, but also servants. And that it is our responsibility to serve the common good of all the residents of Miami Springs.
While pointing for the flag.
My allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so we have a lot of things on the agenda. Things to discuss. Let's get started with the. Well. And in a workshop, we don't have to have a form. But I believe there's two or three residents here that I see, and I just want to give them the opportunity. If there's something, it's very, very short. But if there's something that you would like to address the council. Um. All right. So let's go with the city manager's memo in preparation for this workshop.
Mayor, before going to the memo, our couple of. Under item A, small letter A. The ordinance number is seven seven zero two. And. Item M and N. Which are review or two ordinances, but I'll keep them in Bravo. I believe we can move those off to A.
So we're moving items M and N.
Correct.
Under combining those as part of their whole. And then everyone was.
No, A, small letter A, temporary.
Yes.
It says ordinance is seven oh two, sorry, seven oh seven.
Eleven. All right.
As far as the memo, in preparation for this workshop, we have pretty much four, which were current plan projects. That's in a passion A, your worksheet. Passion B contains a listing of all payoff funding projects that we went through at the prior council. That we just worked on also in the next year. At the same time, we load a complete list of all projects, all the items that staff is currently working on. And as I mentioned in the memo, the reason I'm doing this is you're aware that we're a small city. Committing staff resources. And the list I'm about to read to you provides an overview of the different amount of work that staff is currently up under there. Number one, the Oakwood East Drive project. Number two, the South Row of Hongkensana project. Number three, Dog Course renovation project. Number four, the projects under payoff TA funding report provided by, approved by council. The passion B. Number five, early negotiation with PSOP on a new tenant's contract. Number six, where the process is in coach for painting the community center. Seven, where the process is in coach for roof replacement and transport. Number eight, we're working with our auditors on the fiscal year nine thirty one financial. Number nine, we're working on landscaping of the fencing that will install on the east side of town. Number ten, we have ordered new public parking signage that is sold in downtown area. Number eleven, working on a comprehensive plan amendment with the public unit group. Number twelve, our line rider has applied for a PPO grant to go back to the work study from downtown area. Thirteen, we're working with the city managers on the state of location to present this to you. Twenty twenty-two, which includes the following. Seven hundred and fifty thousand for foot square pump station. Two million dollars for canal bank restoration. Hundred thousand dollars as a world memorial. Three hundred thousand dollars for two million program. Uh, there's another, uh, I believe one point five million dollar project for South Drive. Four more. Uh, so that's one that's missed there.
That's another appropriation. You're saying that's another.
That's another one.
Appropriation.
One, one point five million for South Drive, uh, small water and road improvement project.
You mean East Drive? You mean East Drive?
No, South Drive, this is several. He's probably over. If these come through, that's an additional five projects that we're working on.
Which will be substantial improvements that we do for this whole areas of, you know, large slots in Miami Springs. So that flooding is always a concern.
Uh, number fourteen, we're working on a fifty three ten brands for that off for a new bus for the senior center. Number fifteen, we're working on a East Street brand for pre-planned citywide. So what does, does he even have an idea of something that we're working on? We expect to come down.
But William, I have to ask you that, that these are just projects that you're working on in addition to running the city. That you're. You know what I'm saying? You're running a city with, you know, public works and recreation department and police department and. Uh, doing all of the regulatory requirements and everything else that are necessary for a city. So these are just, and we can keep that in mind and.
These are doing that.
These are far beyond, you know, the, the work that it takes to run the city that we expect our, um, our city manager and all of the city stuff to be doing.
Day to day.
Day to day, so. Um, I think attachment fee is really noteworthy because those are the things when we had the last workshop that had workshop, I think it was. A, I'm not sure, after the new council. The council, right? We had a workshop and we came up with things, additional items that we would like to see enhanced into the city improvements project. And. Those were a listing of, of issues that were. Given to William and me as spending our budget funding for this. So that's additional work also, so I want to keep all that in mind because I think sometimes we, we hear from people, you know, what's the city doing? It's made it, I'm in awe, ever since I've been on this council, of the amount of work that our city does. We left off this list of running, providing COVID testing and vaccinations ongoing for not just Miami Springs residents, but all of South Florida. Anyone in South Florida who wants to have a vaccination of COVID testing, this is the place to come to have it online. And we administer that too. So, um, even from what you're saying, I, that's the list that you're saying, I know it's the tip of the iceberg. And I think all we all do of all these other things that all of this.
Mayor, Mayor, for the chair, I might add that several of those things that we discussed last May are on the list that we just meant that the manager just mentioned.
On here, so it's phenomenal. I'm, I continue to be in awe of how much. Our small city and our small staff is able to accomplish and provide what is getting better.
And you look, uh, say about anyone, all first thirty-six group project.
Oh, yes, that's. Annexation, all these other huge, huge deals. I know, because I'm on the phone with William and my, our city attorneys or other groups about things, projects that, issues that I think went on for quite a while. And, you know. They're still not in progress, so. So with that said, um, we always want to get better, the city, you know. We all agree that the purpose of our thing here in the council is to provide direction on how the city can continue to be the best it can be. Improve, um, everything that we have, make it the best quality of life for our residents. And so that's why I asked for this workshop here now at the beginning of twenty twenty-two, so that we all have a chance to kind of just talk about issues that we think are important, um, that we'd like to. Possibly that on the agenda in the future. I just want to clarify that we don't go at a workshop. Workshops just for discussion. The other thing is we have a lot of items on here, so we can't get into real, real details on some of these items. Some we may give, not that complicated. But some of them, um, it may require, um, a specific workshop just to deal with that, or it might just require. Having the city manager, asking the city manager and us, the attorney to look into it and come back at city council meeting with the information so we can take this. So if we spend way too much time on one issue, I'm going to, um, the council's all correct that. I'm going to ask that, you know, we move on to the next one because. We just won't get to the list. Okay, with that said, um, let's start with, does anybody want to make? Any comments, any questions, any?
To the chair, if I might, Mayor, just briefly, I'd like to applaud you for, again, doing this this year. This was something that wasn't done previously, since I've been up here anyway. Um, and you've done it the last two years, and I applaud you for getting the group together, trying to get the same direction of, of issues going forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. It's, um, you know, we're a group here and we're assigned a really big responsibility. So, um, the sunshine law obviously impacts our ability to discuss anything unless we're in a public meeting. So, um, workshops are useful for that. Okay, so, um, anybody else? So let's go ahead and get started. This is really informal. Um, we'll get started with the gateway overlay district ordinance, which, um, Housewoman Bravo and I get both. Nice to meet you, Senator. Um, okay. Uh, briefly, I'll say when the gateway overlay district proposal, and it was for a big swath of land downtown was, was proposed. It was, uh, as it was presented to council, it was for the opportunity for some of these buildings that, um, were in this downtown area that was really big. Correct, I mean, I don't think anyone targeted that theater property being there for forty years. And, you know, when I had visitors who would come to Miami Springs and hadn't been in Springs in twenty years, and they would go, that thing is still there? I mean, it starts to seem, you know, like it's falling apart, you know? Um, so there. The, the reason for this district, not one particular project, just district, was to allow developers to, um, to come up with ideas of if they purchase a property, ways that they might be able to, um, make it beneficial, obviously, a developer. And Blaine Curtis, um, was a developer. So, you know, tend to throw a bad word on that, but developers are the ones that, our homes, that, you know, build our communities, build our schools, build our churches, our churches and all. So, um. Um, it was a way for, um, developer to, who might own a property there or purchase property there, to present to the council. The possibility of something that they can do with the property. And we would consider, um, allowing some changes in the density and in the parking spaces and other issues based on enhancements to the city. So what I understood to be substantial enhancements to the city that we would negotiate. And it was just something that would be offered, and there would be a lot of give and take until we felt really, really comfortable. Um, the council felt really, really comfortable that we were getting a lot for what we're giving away. So that was when the gateway overlay district was approved. After that, subsequently after that, we did have a developer who came up with a project, and I think. Um, I think it's no secret that I voted against that development because I didn't feel, not because I'm against development, but because I didn't feel that the city was negotiating substantially for what we were allowing there. I felt that there were a lot of, um. Uh, allowances that were being given to the developer, and we were getting very little back. We could have done a much better job of, of making sure that this development was in the best interest of the city and the area. So with that said, it passed. Um, I think we can all agree that it's here now. I'm going to do the most I can to make it successful because it's part of our city now, that, you know, that project is going to be right there. It's going to be up in forma, most in, in our downtown, and I certainly, um, you know, want it to be a success. And, and. Contribute to the beautification and the use and the business community of our downtown area. Um, my thoughts are, the reason I ask for this to be on the agenda is that I think the ordinance needs to be improved. There's several, um, I would say gaps or, um. I won't say deficiencies, but areas in it that, um, just, um, should be, in my opinion, tweaked so that we make sure that with a future project who comes along, um, we're really getting a good, um, development for the community, something that really fits in. And if we're giving away, um, any kind of bar ratio or parking or anything else, that, um, we're getting a lot of benefit, a lot of anger. Some of the issues there, obviously, are the parking, the public parking, but there's other concerns also. And, um. This is probably, this is something that is real detailed, so I don't know that we can go, I mean, that requires a lot of detail on our part. But I guess some of the issues are, you know, who eventually oversees the, um, the proposal that the developer gives us, that gives the city, you know, is there enough oversight? I don't think there's enough oversight into how it's approved. All right, I feel like with this, um, or development that's underway now, it was kind of, it was presented to us and, um. You know, despite my concerns with parking and all these other issues, it was just kind of, okay, this, this sounds really good. It looks really good. Let's go ahead and approve it. So I'd like for, um, in the future, to make sure that this ordinance has enough checks and balances in it that, um. We really give it, we, not just the council, but our staff, get a lot of input from experts and make sure that what we're getting is something that, um, really benefits our city in all ways. Also, another issue on there is that, um, in the ordinance, we're supposed to establish a paper parking and collect parking. Um, that was never done.
I'm sorry, I'm establishing.
Fee for the parking spaces that, um, be allowed the developer to get their public parking and move up, um, providing a certain number of spaces that they could, um, use some of the parking spaces. They're allotted some of the public parking spaces in their count. Um, and the city council was supposed to establish a fee, the city was supposed to establish a fee for those spaces. That was never done. I'm not sure why, it just, um, never was.
To the chair, I believe, because we didn't agree with it.
Because we didn't agree with establishing a fee.
That's all we're called.
So, but it is in the ordinance that we're supposed to do that. So I would like to suggest that we do that, not right now, obviously, this needs studying. We need to determine how much, um, do that. And, um, you know, we're just something that should be available, should be readily available and, and, and needs to be voted on and needs to be made sure that if we're giving away, not giving away, we're allotting, uh, parking spaces in lieu of the developer having their own, that we're getting paid for that substantially. And part of those fees, the reason for collecting those fees is actually to study how to provide more parking, how to enhance more parking, public parking. So one thing beats the other. Um, and so it's really important. There's a few other issues, um, with, um, this gateway overlay district that I would like to, um, have a tweet that I don't want to, I don't want to give. All right, um, some of the things is that we didn't even possibly look at, but that concern me now is, um, we're getting balconies. On these properties. And we really haven't put in any restrictions as to what can be in those balconies. I mean, are we going to have, allow, you know, towels from those balconies? And, you know, what is considered, and I don't believe in the city, that we have anything, um.
Well, in the development order, those are. Both, uh, there are restrictions in there about having satellite dishes and, uh, or things of that nature.
I think satellite dishes, I remember that we can't have satellite dishes out, but I don't know that we rest.
Barbecue as well, so.
Or, you know, other things that later on, it's like it's really incitely or something. So, and, and this, that's not a big issue, but it's probably something that across the board, we have more buildings that are, uh, for, um, and I don't mean just for this building, but across the board for any of the buildings here in Miami Springs. We have a few that are being developed that are several stories of, um, residential with balconies. And we probably need to establish something that, you know, make sure we don't have these eyesores for the neighborhood. The right turn out of the gateway district, um, the property that's in place now. I think we really need to look at how this particular project is going to affect, um, the egress and ingress into, in and out of the parking lot to make sure that it's not affecting the traffic that we already have on foot square. And I know that, um, finally, I mean, at the end of the negotiations, we said, well, it would just be right turn, right turn in and out of the building. But that's not going to be enough unless we have police officers there. They're going to be, we're going to try to be crossing, so.
If you look at the conditions that will. The media that's there now is being extended, uh, along with what to prevent people from.
So that would be, William would be exiting, they have to make a right. Because the median would be there. And also, um, entering, they cannot, they would have to go around and make, and run from the right corner. Okay, my understanding was that we had removed that median.
The median, the median should be extended, right?
Okay, all right. Uh.
So one of the conditions that was put by the final assembly board. Was to extend the median to come out of the parking lot.
Okay, good, good. So that can just be, and, and I'm sorry, because the last thing I looked at, it looked like we had removed that. It was there originally, and then it wasn't in what we approved in the final approvals, but you're saying it was.
It was changed, it said.
It's changed.
Originally it said, uh, no left turn to the outport grid, but then it was changed to say we're going to extend the median to prevent people from doing that.
Okay, all right. Um. I think another issue that we need to discuss and just consider is if we're giving public parking on Canal Street or whatever for these properties, does that mean that the, not just the property that's developed now, but the other ones that they're parking, it's public parking too? Or do they get the rights to restrict their parking to there?
No.
Or it's all?
The parking space on Canal Street and some of their buildings, and I encourage what they're doing, all public parking.
But what I mean is they're, they're parking inside their building in there. That's private.
That's, that's for the residents and for the business owners and for schools for the rest.
When it's for business owners, is that for business owners and the public?
Customer.
That they can, so they can actually, so that can be public parking for.
The first.
For Curtis Parkway then? It's not restricted, the, okay. So then we want to make that clear in our signage and stuff, that there is additional parking inside behind the building, if that's public park. Okay, I think those are the major things that, I guess, what I'm trying to get across is that I think, oh, the point system. The way that the ordinance was written is, um, a developer would assess a certain number of points. I can't remember if it was ten, twenty, remember, it doesn't matter, but for different enhancements, they, they had columns of enhancements they could choose from. And say for one was enhanced lighting. If they provided enhanced lighting to their building, they could get up to one or two points. And they would tally up the number of points, and once they reached a certain level, and I'm making up the numbers because I don't remember off the top of my head, once they reached, say, ten points in enhancements from this list, then that would be it, and they would be allowed to proceed. You know, basically, the, the project, um, uh, would meet the requirements of, um, exceeding the bar. So I think those points we need to look at again, not to eliminate them, to make them more restrictive, require more of them. What I can see is that the point system that was given away for this project, or we'd not like another developer to come in, um, with another project and say, if we basically the same thing we did, and they get the points, um, you know. And then basically we have to allow them to do the same thing because, um, uh, we have made these point system more descriptive. So I'd like to look at that and see how, again, uh, we can make sure that if we're giving away points or, um, for an enhancement, that it's a really valuable enhancement, not something necessarily that the builder would likely, um, do anyway, or, or was planning to do and might just tweak a little bit.
I think, uh, it, it is, stop points, what, what it did was, in order to go from a, a free all of one for maximum of one point seven, that would be point seven. Uh, there will be different things, uh, for example, one of them is part of public places. If they provided our public places, they will get an additional point two to get there. So they can pick from this list to come over point seven, so they can go with one point seven. And there are different criteria or things like that, for example, uh, one of the side improvements, uh, lighting, decorative lighting, and all that, is a little one.
Right, and, and I think that's what I mean is deference lighting. I don't think there's any developer right now that's going to build a, a rebuilding with, you know, nice condos that wouldn't provide decorative lighting on the outside, you know, like they do in Doral, that's given. Yet we're giving away points for that. And that's something that they would, in all likelihood, do anyway to enhance their facility. So, um, also the, the far one point seven, um, perhaps, um. You know, is that, is that too high? Should it be less than that, even still get that? So again, these are all things that we need to discuss. What I'd like is to ask everyone, um, to look at the ordinance in detail, um, come up with, you know, with the city attorney and. Mayor know if there's, I mean, and city manager know if there's anything major, but other than that, just ask our manager and city attorney for them to look at it and, and give us input as to where they think we can, um, improve on the quality of the ordinance.
Okay, so in addition to what, um, your ritual said, I see that there's a lot of little imperfections here that can lead to a lot of major problems. And we're, you know, now, and just to piggyback on what she said, there's no saying someone, you know, another developer coming in. And we're already doing them now, and just to piggyback on what she said, there's no saying someone, you know, another developer coming in here. Wanting to put up another structure, we can't limit them on what they can do based on what we have now, so if there's changes that we wanna, you know, do in this ordinance. I, I, you know, we're gonna need some time to to put that together, but right now, it's just a free ride on this ordinance, so. If the building goes up to five for sale and they want to jump on this board, it's the way that it is, we might just have another parking issue. I mean, I, I know that here it says that the, the zoning director or the city planner has full authority to establish parking requirements for alterations to new construction. But ultimately, um I respect our city planner and their profession, but I really think that we need to come, uh, we need to see through that parking study that's gonna be coming to the city. To be able to put in uh an effective order where the parking is clear and everything is buried here, because right now it's just open for grabs and I'm just scared that. We're gonna run into the same situation again and we're already, you know, the lack of parking, we had Matt John that, you know, uh. An expert, he, he did a great study, I mean, it was a little bit scary to see that, that's very preliminary, but we have, you know, plenty of that um parking way that's gonna be coming through and I'm just really. Looking forward to, to seeing that study and see using that together with the comprehensive plan that's being worked by.
Corridors.
You know who?
Corridors.
So working with a new comprehensive plan for the parking study, I think we can make it more effective and more balanced um ordinance. So, my proposal here, I mean, I'm not gonna get into that, because there's a lot of things going on here, I have a lot of little questions. Um, especially when it comes to the F A R, which is a very big thing, it could be a positive thing, definitely. I mean, I see cities, you know, a lot of them face between the one and the one point seven, but their areas allow for that density. Okay, that, that area or there where developing the gateway, it's a very compact area, so um. Our city is growing and it's growing fast and I just don't think that we're prepared on. On an ordinance and kind of be open, like, because there's just a lot of things that are gonna happen, I wanna avoid incidents, I wanna avoid accidents, I wanna, you know, make it one of a smooth. Um transition to a more populated area and, you know, I can't hang on responsible and down though, and for me, this is just like. So it's okay, we started off with this building, we're getting a little bit of it, the earth experience. But the only, the only way to buy time here to fix this ordinance is that, I mean, the parking study, that between the comprehensive fund. Uh, but it gives us is to put a temporary, I would say, I was doing some research, maybe the possibility of entertaining a temporary um. Moratorium, I provided two samples. Two different ordinances from two cities that actually help them, and they take a six month thing, just to get things working. I don't know how long it's gonna take to get the parking study or the comprehensive fund, but it kind of like buys it sometime, so that we can, you know. Line our apples together, because we don't want to get rid of it, we put very uh audios such as well. But we have it's open here in the, in the ordinance and we don't even have like a, I know we have a fee schedule, the city does have a fee schedule, but as far as when it comes to. The gateway, maybe we should have a specific fee schedule for gateway, I, I don't know, but for us to buy some time to do this right, to give developers and businesses a chance. Because we are not gonna come here if our structure is not um working well. Um so here.
Yeah, I sure did.
So basically, um if you look at any of them. This small city. Need Florida, Fort Need Florida. This is an ordinance of the city of Fort Need Florida establishing a temporary moratorium, revealing the process in work issuance of any comprehensive plan amendments. Resonies or mandatory use of rules, site plan of rules or building permits for development or construction of any non residential facilities. Um, it's just to give you a, a, a broad idea, the city is granted authority and this article to exercise any forms of purposes.
Councilwoman Worsford B.
I have no idea, it's a, it's a.
What's the population of?
It's another county in Florida, I'm not very familiar with the population, but I think that that idea and the purpose behind it is, is the same, right? No matter how big or small you are, you still need an ordinance in place for a smooth uh condition. But basically, it's just allowing for a city to buy some time to get their ordinances and processes and procedures together. And so the city is determined that it's the best interest of its residents, businesses and residents to have sufficient regulations to set the public health, safety and welfare. I'm piggybacking back on Maria, I know it about the, the balconies and what can be, it could be a safety hazard, you know, come for a season, things are flying around everywhere. Um, it's just to give you a broad idea that you do have an option, you can exercise something, buy it some time. Whatever is going on now will continue to just process, it's already, it's already going, so whatever is at and now will continue to, to, you know, follow through. But this is more of a, a future plan, um I'm learning with you guys now, I'm, you know, I was doing my, my homework as well. I mean, you know, just to get some local laws and ordinances together, because I've did a lot of conflict, I don't see it, I saw here on. On the amendment to our future land use, uh, the comprehensive plan, I went back and we added a permit of the city manager by through the planning and zoning directors authorized to make necessary changes or prefer to the future land use now. To reflect four point change, I don't know what four point change means. According to what ordinance, I want, I mean, I, I don't know if there's something that you guys have on the back end that, you know, you got yourself, but I wouldn't wanna lay all that on, on my city manager. Or my zoning director, I would like for them to have some sort of guide and if we need to make variances from there, make, you know, uh. A sound decision on council to give us that option, because we're, we're not anywhere here, I mean, I don't know if we should be. Maybe not, but some sort of guidance and section for the implementation of those, just to implement that, so I, I have to tell a little bit of a couple of questions.
Councilwoman, let me, um, when partly comprehensive plan will be according to, it's gonna be public, you will counsel. And that's the part two of the question.
For the chair, in, in response to Councilwoman Bravo, or Vice Mayor Bravo, sorry, um, the reason I asked about Ford meeting, because I don't know what it is. I do know a little bit about N F U, that's not good, I'm serious. But, I don't know. But, but I will tell you this, relative to the gateway overlay. And when we, when we did this, we put this thing together, it was not an easy thing to do. Um, any major project that we've ever done in this city is always gone to the scrutiny, major league scrutiny, relative to the manager, the planner. And all, all the players, you know, uh the council naturally, and both of them, uh but even citizens simply. And the problem with my experience is that we are basically land poor. We don't have any way to go out, we have a lot, but then we're limited to that. So I, I recognize that throughout, throughout a lot of these projects, the various managers who were in place at the time, um, not necessarily William, but he was a part of some. Uh, cut deals and the council approved these, I mean, this wasn't done without the approval of our body. And it was done for the right reasons at the right time, anything going forward as far as what we want to do, overlay, um, it's totally up to us, there's no question about it. I appreciate that you love it and bring it up, but what else are you gonna do? You wanna talk about parking, put that point, parking is not a driving force, it really is not a driving force. You cannot guarantee a business to commit to this town right now and guarantee them twelve parking spots, impossible, impossible, so why do we continue to dwell on this? Well, you can argue that, that's, that's an argument, that's okay, but, you know, it is what it is, I mean. I mean, I'll leave it there.
It is what it is, it is what we want to be, so we need to start somewhere and um I think it's just something to, to take into perspective if we want to uh straighten ourselves out and uh. So, so we've been up successful businesses, we've been up successful um. Interresidential, I don't know, there was another, maybe, you know, I've got my experience, I mean, years, I'm so tired of, you know, maintaining my house, I wish they would like a fifty five and over, but. I never thought about that, we don't wanna leave, we wanna stay, maybe not, but, you know, people took other ideas, but again, um. This is really just, you know, to look at the, uh, by trying to, to get these parking studies and comprehensive plans in place so that we can do these things right. Because these failing and amending.
Council, please speak into the microphone, please, it's hard here, you can actually bring the.
So that's our only way out of this.
Councilman Best, I just wanted to uh mention that, and I agree with you totally, everything that the council, that comes through the council, is the best decision, I mean, it's decided.
We, we, we hope so, we hope so.
It's the best and um uh decision and it's um the majority vote and that's what goes and that's how democracy is set up and um, but. I think where we are right now is as we see this one project and it's new, it was a new concept, the Silver Lake District was a new concept. In writing, um, it appeared um to, and it did, it, it totally provided the impetus for us to have developers have an interest in revitalizing areas that. There's no other way to describe that theater property other than depravity, it's just, you know, an eyesore, but an eyesore for forty years. Um, so, um, again, the overlay district, um, the intentions are good uh on it, I think right now. What perhaps I'm bringing and I think Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Bravo say, is that we'd like to improve the ordinance so that it's, it um. I, I see some gaps in it that aren't in the best interest of the city going forward with future developments, um, and there's still several properties that could be bought up and, and, you know, and would fall in this category. And I'd like to um, to strengthen the ordinance to make sure that um benefits to developers, obviously it doesn't benefit them, you know. Nobody does anything unless there's gotta be a profit and a reason to do it, but that um uh substantially is always in the best interest of. Keeping our city beautiful, accessible, making sure that we're getting the best we can for anything that creates.
You know, we talk about a parking lot. If where Washington's gym is in that strip mall across the street going to the east of the project we're discussing.
Front end.
Where, where it happened, what would you do for parking there? Think about that.
And that is one of those.
And that could be substantial, I mean, they could go in there with like fifteen, twenty, twenty-five condominiums, like, where do you park? They, they almost have to follow the same regimen as what these folks are doing with the one that's going on right now and put it.
And in a way.
As there is not.
I don't know that we have that luxury, um, it'd be nice if we did, but obviously, um, we, you know, may, we may not, it just depends on, you know, who's, what developers are interested in and who buys property. Um, it would be great to have this property come up, function, see how it works, see how, and then, you know, address things that, that we realize a thing, you know, going forward with the ordinance. Um, you know, these are things that we need to tweak.
Perhaps as vice.
We may not have that luxury, because, you know, another property could be developed and could be proposed and then we've got double these, these problems, so. Particularly the parking fees, um, addressing, and you're right, uh, you know, some people perceive we have a parking problem, some, some don't, but. We're about to have a lot more of these.
I, I can tell you that.
I, I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just with the properties for sale, uh, that area, which is the whole school and property, and you have this property. Um, Wood Square, I've had a number of people approach in a different project, and it's a council, we said. They don't have the space or the room to divide onsite parking, so those two book projects, because they don't have. The advantage is Bob, they don't have what to put uh onsite parking, so if anyone buys it, the most I can do there is regulate the stair. Not knock it down and build, have to renovate what's there, similar to what they did at Barry's neat, and they will be grandfathered in. So if you have a restaurant going to that block, there's no parking, they're grandfathered in. Well, that's, that exacerbates the so-called parking.
To the chair. Yeah, um, well, I met a mayor and Vice Mayor Bravo. I think, um, I'll, I'll just add my voice to the idea of reviewing. These uh, these ordinances, I agree with that. It's uh, the purpose of it is to improve things and, and uh, you know, have a, a broader discussion with some of the potential properties uh. In the city, I mean, remove that in terms of looking at, you know, footprint and that city and so forth. You know, as Bob said, uh, we're a city that's long on history and short on geography, so, um, you know, even a parking garage has to go up. Because it's not the, it, it is what it's going to be, so I, I, I just wanna say I support the idea of us visiting comprehensively. I mean, even some of the points that I was gonna be raised are things that are already in the hopper, that we're just trying to figure out. Um, how do we wanna move forward with them, number one, number two, how do we keep our residents informed that we're having these conversations? I know we, uh, we have a webpage and so forth and so on, but, you know, we, we, we get stuck all the time and ask questions, what about this? What about this other thing? Um, I get questions about the new building that I really don't know the answer to, but uh, it's uh, you know, there is a little bit of consternation because it's moving along and it's there. And if everything holds on, it's, it's gonna open up in, in about seven or eight months or nine months, whatever the timeframe is, and then we'll have a much better idea of what the flow is going to be like.
Expect it to be a beautiful building by our accounts.
Yeah, and so, and so I think it's, uh, so I agree that we have this conversation that we review of these ordinances and um. You know, with the idea of answering those questions, we have parcels of land that are up for sale. Um, and they are limited in space, so what are we really willing to consider moving forward with those spaces? I've asked the city manager about them and, you know, some ideas have come up and some things just didn't work with what people wanted, it just wasn't the space. But it's our challenge, right, so we have to look at it and see, okay, what, what are we willing to do, given the, the limited space that we have, relative space, I should say.
But through the chair, um, that, that's a good point that you just made, um, but, but, but further that if you think about. All of the projects that have been done over the last several years in this town, community center. Senior centers, projects going under Wood Square. Slash mines along Love. Issue plus one of that. People that complained about this in this town, people that we had to spar with over the years, you know, two, three months later they come to us and, you know what? That's nice, so I think it's a learning curve too, relative to how we conduct our business in this town, and, and, and I think it's a good learning curve. Because most of the stuff, thank God, that we've done so far, it's been good, and there's no, no reason to believe to go on forward. Be surveilled. Test it up and down, inside out, upside down, and, and, and we'll figure out how to get it back, but again, we can only deal.
Mayor, I'm good. Um, so, I appreciate you guys uh bringing this to, to the table, for, for the record, I, I figured that all the. The major topics that were gonna be discussed today, because there's such hot button issues that are being uh put online to springs dot com and everybody, so I. I didn't, I didn't submit anything, because I figured I'd have a lot to say when the time came, I didn't know that my name was gonna be on this for the record, it's not for disinterest, it's uh. It was uh, it was just because I, I knew that it was going to come up. Um, so there are residents that reach out to us and post on Facebook and call us by name on minus springs dot com, on open letters, uh, uh. Repealing the, uh, the overlay district. That is a couple bus stops too far for me because of the legality of it, I think. You know, this was done by the council in two thousand and eighteen, all of these properties have have gained worth and value because of the overlay district. They kept paying taxes, they've been getting loans and selling properties. So the the thought of repealing it, I think will leave us, we're just over the city up to all kinds of liability legally, right? So repealing, I feel is out of question, it's just that that's. You know, that's that's something that that again, is getting posted online about why we don't do something like that. Um, I feel like the most important thing is that we've gotta, we've gotta be honest about identifying what the issues are. Because we have, there hasn't always been consensus and and even now, like statements were made about that like parking, you know, isn't such a big issue that came up when when. I brought up having a parking garage where next to behind the post office there where there's. And then there was said then, that was back in May, about that parking isn't an issue, as a matter of fact, well, this is all getting voted on, that was the audience, there was somebody that's no longer on the dais that was here who said that. But Uber parking won't be an issue in five years, which I thought was kind of short sighted and I kinda scoffed at. Um, so the all the conversations about, you know, are there nefarious reasons behind why this was approved? Like, I feel like the horses left the barn. Uh, I would, I would like. I would like to hear from Heidi down the line, doesn't have to be right now, about whether or not a moratorium could happen, because I think that we need to. We can't, we can't kind of wish away that these things are gonna happen, we don't even know the tip of the iceberg of what's gonna happen, there's a lot of things, I mean, we talk about. You know, a right-hand turn only, that all of that traffic going, leaving that parking garage is gonna go into the circle, which is going to increase the traffic. You know, that that if you, everybody here knows that that there is a humongous sentiment about, you know, being worried about. Hometown feel of Miami Springs and about the density, about the traffic, that's something that comes up a lot. We know that's something that that our residents that are that are have been here with us for a long time care about. So I don't think that, I still feel like there's. Uncertainty about whether or not parking is an issue, I I've always felt that parking is an issue, I feel like it's only going to get a lot worse. Um, you know, I think that some of the things that have been posted online about that the the the. The engineers that did the, or the people that did the parking study, you know, were like on the tape with the developer of the. If it's my understanding, they said that we were fifty parking spaces short of what they reckon, so I, how would they own the tape? They would basically prove in our point that they didn't feel like there was enough parking, so I mean, if they, they were on the tape, they, you know, they ripped off the developer. Uh, the fact that it was, that it was approved like that means that we just, I feel like we need to move forward. We need to all be on the same page about that, what the issues are so that we can tackle them. Uh, I feel like if the city manager feels that it's possible to do a moratorium to allow us, you know, to get. The right information so that we can look at these things, I I agree with everything that you said, Mayor, I think that there are things that we can look at, we can, we can really kind of dissect this and and. And analyze it and do what's best. Uh, but I feel like the decision was made to do the overlay district and that horses left the barn and I think that, but I think we need to be proactive about. Mitigation strategies for what we know is coming, I think of wishing it away or feeling, you know, like, you know, completely for parking in five years, that kind of stuff is is crazy, I think that. If we can, if we can have a pause and be able to, you know, when I'm not talking about repealing. But if we could have legally, uh, the standing to be able to pause and and analyze this a little bit better, I I believe that everything that you talked about. About the parking, about considering the parking fees, about, you know, reviewing the accountability of the decision making going forward, about the the farthest, I feel like. We, and I know that some of you guys were on on the council at that time and and as you said, you you were somebody who voted against it, but I feel like it's our responsibility while we're here. To really stop and take a good look at this and and not talk about like, well, you know, why do we keep, you know, why do we keep bringing it up, it's done. I don't feel like that's productive, but I also don't feel like, you know, ignoring it, you know, like I feel like something has to be done. Uh, so I too am in favor of of reviewing the ordinance so that we can make things better, I mean, I just. And you guys know that we called Washington's gym, I remember when it was Washington's gym, it's prime fitness town. But when you just look at all of these properties, and I know that as as Councilman Best said, we're we're kind of land port. Uh, but I know every resident that I speak to, and and again, it was kind of like the pedestrian bridge thing, like people would talk to me, I'm like, is anybody like. Like, think about this rationally, everybody's telling me the same thing, like, where are the people in the various queens, I I go to various queens, I I know, I I know. Okay, but where are those people that are parked, where are the people in Oak Square, I noticed that the for sale signed in Oak Square with them, I don't know what that, what that signals. But parking is an issue and it's going to get a lot worse when that property where the theater used to be goes online. Because as per the study that the developer paid for, they're fifty short. Uh, and and when you were talking about, when when William was talking about the first floor would be for the owners, retail owners, maybe that's part of the study. I just, I I cringe because the, it's not. Uh, we could talk about that it's just like a lunch crunch or there's certain hours and that that could very well be true, but this could, this could totally get away from us quickly. If we don't act now and and I think that it's our responsibility to do so, so I'm in favor of reviewing. The ordinance and and I would also be in favor of of asking Heidi to look into whether or not. Uh, there's a way that we can just have a brief moratorium to allow us to to do the right thing, measure twice and cut once. I feel like if we're gonna review, I feel like the urgency and pressure of 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 applications going through or somebody like, I feel like. Uh, if that's possible, it it could only help and and.
Wouldn't it be radical if we can fix the parking problem like that? Like making downtown pedestrian and cycle only. Let's be years down the road, but something to think about. In in other words, what I'm suggesting is let's not get off on the wrong, on the wrong track or spending money.
Heidi, do you wanna weigh in, I think I get the feeling we're all in agreement that we would like to, we're not taking drastic measures of, you know. Exending it or doing it, but we would like to improve upon what it is so that we strengthen the city's. Um, you know, the negotiation abilities for the city and make sure that, you know, when a development property comes through that is asking for an increase in bar. That we, we have, I think one of the things I've heard is make sure that there's sufficient oversight, which I think was lacking or is lacking in this ordinance. Sufficient oversight so that we really are getting, you know, the deal, or we're we're giving away bar, I mean, basically. And that we're really getting something that is, you know, major substantial enhancements to the city, not just something that, you know, probably the owner. Would have put in their air anyway, but he's putting it in so. To get points. The other thing is is the parking issue and all, but then I'm also hearing about the moratorium. Um, can you weigh in as to whether a moratorium would be the right way to go with this, whether it's a wise way to go with this, or whether it's just. Um, having you and William look at what needs to be improved on there and give us a plan of your suggestions, I guess along with Chris, their city planner. Of how we can improve the ordinance that can go from here.
Sure, good evening, Mayor and Council, I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, good evening. So yes, I think as far as doing a moratorium, I don't think that that's the best approach right now. I think that that approach would be more useful and more effective. Once we've actually identified the issues and the goals that you're trying to reach. Um, and right now it seems like it's it's a little unclear what the intended goals are with this district. I I know obviously what the goals are as are stated in the ordinance, but I think what the goals are right now of what problem it is that the city council is. Interested in solving, I don't think that that's. Abundantly clear, at least not as I'm sitting here listening to everyone's remarks. Um, as far as reviewing the ordinance and determining. How it can be improved. I think again, that's where we need a little more direction, I mean, we can review the ordinance and and give you ideas on different things, but. With what goal, right, what is it that the city council wants from this? Do you want to encourage a certain type of? You know, when you look at the F A R bonus criteria, is there something that you're trying to do there? What is the the measure you're trying to improve upon, so I think that's where we need a little bit of direction from you all. Um, and then we're happy to, of course, review it and give you our feedback. I do wanna remind the council that with this district, remember that these applications not only go to the city planner. Um, for his review and he gives you his professional recommendation on a project and all of the various aspects that go into it. But it also goes before the city's planning and zoning board, if there's a variance that's involved, it goes to the board of adjustment. So that's another level of review aside aside from just the staff level review. So you have the board review and then it comes to you. So to the extent that. There's a concern about oversight, I'm I'm, I I always think that there's room for improvement of things, so please don't. Mistake what I'm saying, but there is a significant amount of oversight. At least in the process that's built in, so. Those those aspects are in there. As far as the moratorium, I do wanna mention that there is. Anytime we do a moratorium, we have to be very careful. We've done it for many of the cities that we represent. Um, it's not something that's unheard of, but it is something that we need to be very cautious about using because we are affecting people's property rights, so. You know, and we can, we can discuss that further if you wish.
Good chair Heidi. Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, um, I guess coming to the other more feeling of temporary moratorium. I understand you completely about the the rights of, you know, the ownership of the properties. I think what I'm trying to say is more about a temporary building moratorium for future developments. So wouldn't necessarily, I don't think, or if I'm wrong, affect the ownership of the property, hard to be transferred or sold, but I think it's the person. Coming in with a specific intent, I'm I'm not sure of the the specifics, I just really am looking for maybe a. Find some time, sort of say, to to iron out these gaps that we have, because my main concern is people jumping on, or developers jumping on this bandwagon with ordinances that we have in place and we can't even deal with it now. Um, I I I.
What what I'm, what I'm trying to suggest is, I I I understand what it is you're trying to do, you you wanna like. Put a hold on development that may be coming forward, I I understand that that's your goal. But what is it that the city, and I I'm saying that collectively, as a city council, if you were to direct a moratorium, be prepared. What is it that you are trying to solve? And we need to identify that issue so that when we, if and when we do a moratorium. We can properly identify that in the moratorium ordinance. Uh, we can't just say we wanna put a pause on things without saying what it is that we're trying to solve.
So one thing with, obviously it's the parking and the other thing is waiting on the new comprehensive plan that's being worked upon, I don't even know what that's gonna look like. So if we all see it together, what are some items or issues that that you've experienced and cities have come forward to go ahead and execute a temporary moratorium? What experience have you had in in those cases? I'm just trying to relate to other cities to see if there's something there that.
I mean, I I I've done moratorium where you're trying to promote more environmentally. Sound buildings, where you're trying to improve. Specific landscaping to implement certain things, like the goals are clearer. And I don't know that, as we sit here tonight, I'm hearing what the specific goal is. I think that we can certainly review the ordinance. And and the manager and I can come up with perhaps some ideas that are. Are capable of being implemented. Without running the risks of having a moratorium.
Mayor, I I thought you had a good idea, you said you mentioned maybe at a future meeting for us to kind of. You've mentioned like, we should all look at the ordinance and come back to a meeting.
Well, I think a workshop just specifically for that, you know, because a workshop allows us, you know, there's no voting, it allows us to talk, basically, it's not something that.
I would be in favor of that, like it would give us all an opportunity to look at it, because I, if I'm understanding what Heidi's saying is that like, there needs to be a focus. Behind, and and I, I, right, and obviously, there's the attorney, so I I hold in great regard her opinion, she's saying that. Like, it's not impossible to do, but but right now there isn't a focus that I feel like that should be.
And I think in looking at even the example that Vice Mayor Bravo brought up, one of the properties, and I think it's the one, I'm trying to find it now. That I saw, the moratorium, they found there, the reason was, I can't find. That moratorium. I noticed that they did say. Okay, and and this is it, the purpose of this. Opposing that the temporary moratorium is to allow the city to have time to, and then it specifies to locate their land use code and build codes, I think. If I'm hearing you correctly, that's what you're saying, Heidi, you need to be more specific as to. Um, I I think one of the main reasons is the parking issue that, you know, we're giving away public parking. Um, and that's a concern, you know, how many times can we do this, we've done this for this project, again, I wanna stimulate, the project is here, it's with us, I will do everything in my power. To make it a success, I want it to be a showcase for Miami Springs because, you know, it's ours, it's right here in ours, so I'm all for it and doing the best possible. But going forward, you know, the way this ordinance is written, is it really realistic for us to. Um, continue in the future to allow other properties to increase their bar and just expect to use public parking, I mean, our public parking is really finite. The availability of our public parking, and I think perhaps when we were looking at this ordinance. Um, we were a bit overzealous, thinking, look around the town, we've got all this parking available. Uh, that certainly won't be the case once this building goes up. And so those kinds of things, and I don't know if that's sufficient to say something like that, to establish a parking fee. We don't have a parking fee established and, you know, the law says we're supposed to establish it, collect it. Um, and I don't want as well just on the parking, there's a whole bunch of probably other things, one of them is that the decision, one of the decisions falls so solely on the city planner. Um, and then looks forward, I think that's an area where we need to have more oversight, I would like to have, but. You know, not just from our city planner and and I think the world of Chris. Um, but that's a lot of responsibility for any one person in one small city like ours to be reviewing all this and get all, you know, dot all the. The i's and and cross all the t's. I would like it put in the process from our public works department. I mean, they're going to be impacted by whatever happens there and they're not even, you know, involved in a major decision like this, you know, let them see the project and get us there and put up things that perhaps. Um, enhancements that we should request. To make sure that it goes smoother, obviously our building zonies involved, our advisory board, I know their advisory board. We do it. But those, is that insufficient for a moratorium or do we need more specific? Or can we say, like Vice Mayor Bravo suggested that we're waiting on the comprehensive plan? And we want to put a moratorium based on that or any information?
I I think what we should do is, as far as the parking fee, I did speak with the manager about that earlier. That is something that the city planner should be preparing his. Um that is something that the city planner should be preparing his analysis and providing. What that fee should be. And I think that he, we can discuss with him how he is implementing that program. Because no, there isn't a an infinite number of of public parking that can be used. So um how he allocates the public parking when it's being used. And in lieu of providing the onsite parking is something that perhaps can be better explained. Um and then if there's changes that we need to make, then we can do so. Uh but I wouldn't recommend doing a moratorium for the purpose of putting in a resolution to set a fee. Um on the other, however, as far as doing it.
We're gonna study the parking, um we're awaiting the um comprehensive plan, we're um looking to do a.
We can we can look at that, but I would, we need to be very careful on that, so. We'll come back, we can come back to you with the recommendations on what we can do. Um and then go from there. And if we wanna do a a moratorium ordinance, um once we've finalized all of that, we can.
And if not, you know, still during the workshop where we discuss all this, we still then um. Uh you know, try to uh fill in the gaps of where we can make this ordinance uh better, stronger. I mean, you have it, it's, you know, it was set here for a reason. We obviously needed um to improve upon that area over downtown. And and this helps do it, but we just wanna strengthen it for the benefit of the community.
Uh just to clarify, we are talking about three ordinances. Yeah, I mean, we lumped them together, so if if we're going to be reviewing with the assistance of city man, you know, city manager. And the and our attorney, and we're looking at three ordinances to review them. Um maybe the word moratorium doesn't quite apply, but whatever it is, we need to have a conversation. Um for uh councillors or representation, where we just have a conversation about clarifying. What would be the goals of reviewing these ordinances? And 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 then that would lead us to a a conversation about, is this something that we should pursue as a moratorium? Or or what other check?
Uh through the chair, uh on the on the tail of it, yes, I think that all of us, if some of us have read this, some of us might not have. All three of these, uh but we need to do that. And I would strongly recommend, Mayor, that we hold another workshop meeting relative to that. Only issue.
Yes, I agree.
And third, and the other thing I have to say is, I'll bet you a cup of coffee and I'll label it right now. That after this building is open going, same number of parking places that are available on Canal Street will be available with that.
I'm gonna get a special.
I'll take that coffee.
Uh and and basically, as Mr. Mendes mentioned, uh it's really good morning, sort of following.
I'm sorry.
Eleven eleven twenty nineteen and eleven oh seven twenty eighteen. Deadwood, eleven oh six twenty eighteen is just uh adding the deadwood over the difference of the comp plan. So there's nothing there that's uh.
Okay.
It's basically means two of them. Eleven eleven nineteen and eleven oh seven twenty eight.
Okay, yeah, thank you, William, for clarifying that because I was uh a little confused. Right, so the the two ordinance.
Chair, if I can make a clear request that the court sent us each of these individually so that we can have the opportunity to study before the before the workshop meetings fall. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, guys, so let's move on. I think we're all in agreement. We'll have a workshop to look at this more detail. Um okay, the next item is downtown business area parking, and that was something that Councilman Dest was and I brought. Um all I wanted to say on that is, um you know, obviously, um we're aware. Um that the downtown business area parking, um well, is going to be affected by the new building. Um you know, likely affected, uh Councilman Dest. Um I think substantially, but it may not be. Um and also, uh through the um the former residents, through different advisory boards. We hear um over and over, it's something that has been discussed at the Business and Economic Development Advisory Board. Uh the need for additional parking in our community that uh that that piece coming up that, you know, we need to address parking. Um one of the things that that comes up a lot is that people wanna park in front of their business. Well, I don't see how anyone probably can always accommodate that. You know, obviously, when we've got businesses very close together, if you've got a car parked in front of your business and somebody else wants to park there. That's a different position in a small city like ours. But um I just wanted to let the council know that we are doing. Um and and we're waiting for the end of the year, we'll be getting a uh report from the Business and Economic Development Task Force. And um I expect that parking, improving the parking downtown will be one of the major recommendations. Finally, because Mark Prurich, our chair, um is here in the audience, um very grateful for sharing that task force. Um so um we are doing what we can to tweak right now. Things that are minor, that we don't have to wait for a major report, that there's no cost involved. Um and that is um ordering signs to improve directional access to parking. We have, we know that there's public parking throughout the city, but if you don't know, you would stand there and go, okay, there's supposed to be parking here. Where am I supposed to go? Heidi brought up a good point today when I was talking to her earlier, um that if you look at our website, um there's not, it doesn't say anything about parking. We should overlook there saying there's parking, but public parking is available at this location and here and possibly with a map. Showing areas on directional parking. There's a lot of areas where um we say there's public parking. But where you, when you get there, it's kind of confusing because there's tow ways out and this is really public parking. But how would I know that I'm not gonna leave my car here because to, you know, uh space is over, it says tow way. We need to clarify that this is public parking. Um make it more appealing, you know, make sure that it's clean, that it's attractive, that it's well lit. But those are all things that we should be doing anyway. These are just housekeeping on, you know, situations. It's the available ones, you'll look on your phones. And the other thing is, um I know, um this has been brought up in the past. Um the business owners, you know, say they're parking in front of their business and taking up a space that could be used for their customers. But there's not really a lot of other places to park. So um we're looking at finding other parking um available for our employees, our city employees. Who are taking up spaces on Westwood Drive and, you know, and are able to walk a few blocks. For them to park and other business owners so that they can park, the owners can park and they can direct their staff to park in a parking space, um perhaps a block away. Um that frees up spaces in front of their building. Um I know we've been negotiating with the two churches that have open spaces here. Um to see if that's, so that's still ongoing to be discussed another day, but. Um but those are things we should be doing anyway. We don't have to wait for, you know, these are just our housekeeping improvements and enhancements. Um and I wanna encourage anyone in the council, if you have any ideas like that of, you know, things that we can do readily, easily. Um every time we open up a new parking space, that's one more space that's available, you know, in front of the building. Um Councilman Dest was, I'll let you uh, oh, the other thing is that we have applied for a grant. Or a parking uh assessment, is it comprehensive parking? Master parking plan from the T P O. Um if if we do get it and it's. You never know about these things, but it's a pretty good chance that we'll get it. Um we'll be getting it within the next few months, it's a very fast thing. And then we can look at a comprehensive, I personally do not wanna spend any of the city's funds, major funds, on doing anything. Until we do a study, um and, you know, when we have this study available to us, if it is, um to look at it and give us input. Um as to what, um how we can improve the overall parking situation in Miami Springs. I know that there's been studies done in the past. Um that was a different council. None of us were there then. I don't know why they weren't carried through. Um those studies would not be applicable to right now because obviously things change. So that's the reality. We're dealing with the here and now and um having study done now. With this grant is um what I think is reasonable, doable, and we can go from there. Um okay, Councilman Dest was, I'll let you continue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um I um I included, I I recommend this inclusion of the discussion of these points. Um because I'm of two minds, uh you know, like Councilwoman Bravo. We ran on certain things that we wanted to try to get done and of course, knowing that just being one person on council doesn't mean. Get all these things done, but it's important to let residents know what what we are doing. And and uh and moving things forward. And as part of that, we all, uh you know, voted and and established uh this fine. Task force, economic development and business in the city. And we have three distinguished members of that group here tonight. And 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 we and we did say, I remember, I was the other person being on two of their meetings there. Um while the life of the task force is for a year. And, you know, at the end of which we would receive a comprehensive report of their recommendations. That if there were things that we thought could be done on a shorter time uh perspective, then we'd like to hear about those as well. And so I know that uh all of you have seen one way or another that some of the recommendations that have been made. In the in the uh the task force about specifically about Westwood Drive. Um and and so, cause I'm I'm of two minds, that's right, I think. The idea of of refurbishing the that uh particular uh street. Uh several blocks and and because it does have a fair amount of the businesses that we have in the city. Whether they're restaurants or real estate or whatever. Um and and I'm also, you know, I I'm a dreamer too. I'd love to see some streets closed at pedestrian exit. You know, um if I had my brothers, if you entered the city over the bridge from Okeechobee, you go halfway around the circle, keep going on the parkway. Because the circle, there's just no way to fix that. But anyway, that's my thinking. So uh I know that Captain Hall and others have presented some ideas, shared them. With William about particularly the, is it the three hundred block of Westwood? The two blocks, two three and four hundred block? That one hundred and two hundred blocks, okay, so, uh which looked at um um. A- as I understand it, a number of members of the task force individually have walked. Uh those two blocks and have made the comments, don't know about. Not to make some comments here, but uh about the idea of angle parking on Westwood Drive. But the idea, not of eliminating trees actually, is to help build a canopy. But we would have trees on both sides of the streets and help build that canopy. Uh with admission of parking, which might enhance the parking for uh for the businesses and business owners and. And, you know, I know when I go to Cozy Corner, I like to park in the back. When there's no parking, then it gets a little difficult. But um that is the reason why I wanted to bring this. Now, I understand that we're looking at comprehensive parking situation. I think that's important, the same thing with the point about parking garage has talked about, I think, for a few years now. Um and and uh so when I say I'm of two minds, what I mean by that is. What are the things that in in the estimation of the folks that are really looking at this for us in the task force? Could be done on short range? And what are things that will be part of a final report in September and October, whenever this that the. That the task force has the thing to turn that in. Um and 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 I like the, you know, lateral horizontal communication so that. Where, you know, folks don't feel like they're spinning their wheels, not that I I think they are, but just uh that volunteers that we ask to do things. That and they come up with all of these ideas and you guys have been at their meetings. It's pretty dynamic, the group. Uh uh that that we are considering their, what they're saying and looking at possibilities. Uh clearly, the redesign of something like Westwood is it's it's a big deal, even when you, and and make it a one lane. And so I've heard, oh, there'll be a lot of complaints, people who say it's a two-way street, we're closing it to one way. So um and 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 so the last thing I wanna say that, Madam Mayor, you can open the floor, whatever you wanna do with this. Is that when I mentioned about communications and social media, I'm referring to things like. Getting the word out to folks of things that we're working on regularly. So even though it may not look like we're not working on something or the task force is not, has been created, but it's not working on something. Actually, we are and they are, and they're thinking about these things.
And we'll we'll get to that with communication.
And so that's, and and it's, and I and I know that it needs more, you know, re- resources and dollars have to be allocated. So the city manager's office to be able to have the kind of uh. Broader electronic social media presence. So that there's a way for folks even to to look at something, the city council's thinking about doing this and the task force suggested this. What do you all think about this? You know, can we get a three, you know, reaching out to some folks out in Miami, they call us. Can we get the a three D design?
Councilman, let's wait till we get.
No, no, but I'm saying that because it's part of this. And 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 I and I I should have asked you if I could have just jumped on it because what I meant with with this is that. That there are things that we could put out if we had the resources and got all the resources from, you know, the architects of Miami Day and students. To do a three D design, what Westwood Drive would look like if this happened, that should get people to write in and say, no, you guys are crazy. We don't want that or, you know, what do you mean closing that one way? Whatever it is that they're gonna say, oh, they're gonna say, well, okay, maybe that's interesting. So anyway, that's the reason why I would have done some more conversation tonight.
And then you said about your next item was, and and I just wanted to clarify, the the redesign was something that was presented at the Business and Economic Development Task Force. But it wasn't voted on or read on or anything, it was just like we're doing here at the workshop, you know, ideas.
Right, right, well, Captain, the members are here.
Right, but that, no, but that's not, I know that was a committee, that's not a recommendation from the task force. It was something that was decided there, so we wanna wait, you know, and let, if it's something from the task force, they'll make their recommendation. Those of you that are here, who would be the ones to kind of put that together as a. Uh but but it's an excellent, you know, something to consider and obviously, that's that's one of the approaches that we would be considering as. When we. Um sorry, it's one of the approaches that we would be considering when we're talking about doing, um you know, traffic here. Um but that's part of the comprehensive plan too, is when we, if we get the comprehensive plan, we're working on a comprehensive plan, it's looking at. All of these suggestions and the recommendations from our communities, from our advisory task force, from our residents. Our every bit is valid as anything we can come up with here. We wanted to um.
Well, no, what I uh just, well, can I go quickly back to the point of the design?
Yes, yes.
And so I happen to be at the meeting when that was presented, a couple of years back. It's happened to be here that day. Uh a couple of things were presented, parking and I know that. I've seen it and it's uh, you know, was uh, I I don't know what the final. You know, how the task force acted on it because I wasn't near to the end of that meeting as I had to go to the funeral. Uh but I thought it was one good example of something that has come up that can be recommended and brought to, you know, our attention. You know, for for review as we're looking at a broad plan of this. Um and and the parking garage, I I would just, you know, that that would be part of the study that we've been talking about with the parking. Because I know there've been a couple of different sites that talk about. I'm of the mind that we need a parking, whether it's, you know, across from the police station, the fire station, that area. I think the area that Walter was mentioning, but in terms of downtown, there's no question in my mind that we need that. So if that's gonna be part of a parking. Study, that's gonna be looked at because I think that, you know, even moving even further down. It's been brought up in council before about, you know, what are we gonna do with the police department? You know, there's this overcrowded space and, you know, we need to look at, you know, spaces for that. Um so anyway, those are my points of this. I think that I I thought it was interesting, the design that was used and many architects collaborating with us on the war memorial. Interesting way of looking.
Okay, so I think with the parking area, the parking garage, obviously, we're applying for a grant. That'll be the need to look at a comprehensive way to improve parking. And all of our ideas, other suggestions, input from, probably, we'll definitely advertise that and get public input on suggestions. They're going to hear, who's ever doing our parking studies is going to want to hear from the community, similar to what Coradino does, having public sessions, you know, and what the issues are with concerns. I know one of the concerns I hear a lot is everyone wants to park in front of their business. I mean, or they want their clients want to park in front of their business. Parking garage doesn't solve that because your parking still walk away. So that's not to say we don't need a parking. I'm just saying that doesn't solve what I keep hearing of, everyone wants to park, you know, when I go look to the restaurant, I want to be able to park right there. Personally, I find cities like Coral Gables, Golden Row, these other cities, I am shocked if I find parking in front of a room. I expect to park one or two blocks away, and that's part of the entertainment is scrolling from here, one or two blocks, you know, and looking at providing good traffic for the stores that are there. And, you know, and then walking after you're there, scrolling back to your car. Ideally, it would be great for me to be paid for that kind of movie where, you know, it's okay, I'm a block away, it's so pretty, but here, we're certainly not there, but we certainly get here. And the Business Economic Task Force is working to give us recommendations, solid recommendations on ways that we can achieve that. It's an amazing group of people and a lot of good ideas going back and forth. So we're looking forward to your final report and interim reports if you choose to provide.
You know, through the chair, one thing that's funny is all the River Cities festivals the city has ever done. Have you ever heard one time during those four days when they shut the center down? Anybody play about parking? The answer is no. I realize it's a one-off, but you don't hear it. They find a place to park because they want to go.
Yeah, no, they park on the house.
No, naturally.
But this about, you know, on our website, again, is something, we should be doing that anyway. That's not something, you know, like, and somebody brought it, this deciding brought it to our attention. You know, looking at your website, you know, they don't tell many about parking. So, you know, everything we speak is getting toward that, pulling in that direction of, you know, making substantial and important improvements that are needed in our city. And obviously, hearing from our residents or boards, whether people that go and see their input is really valuable.
And one other thing, before we get frisky, we'll spend a lot of money on parking studies. Again, committee, board, best copies of the Lambert, that's over cold, the Lambert, you know. These are about an inch thick in precision in volume. And there's probably not much more in that, in all three of those studies than anybody's gonna give us now. Because I don't think it's changed that much.
Probably where and how exactly.
Be careful how we spend money, more important.
Well, this will be a grant for that, that's why we provide this grant.
No, I agree. Just to highlight that, parking proposal, if you will, that came up that was discussed in the Economic Task Force, which looks at angle parking in Westwood. Right, expansion sidewalks, triple case the amount of parking. So just, you know, just because garages are good, and that's one option, right?
And it might be both.
And it might be both, so just, I'm just highlighting that.
Okay, wonderful, let's go on. We've got a lot of areas to cover, business areas, code enforcement, consistency, aesthetics, facilitating per side outdoor dining, pedestrian access, doing a lot of things there. So, but in general, I think what I mean by that, what I would like to see is, you know, making, letting businesses know that if they want to use their area in front of them, and I know some of them are, that they can reach out to us. It may, you know, William has granted for Cozy Corner, I'll give an example, Cozy Corner. But a year ago, he reached out to us and said, you know, that we have a lot of people that are doing takeout, and they want contactless takeout, but there's nowhere, you know, there may not be parking right in front, and then, you know, we have to walk down the block and try to figure out the car. So they asked if we designated one of the parking spaces in front of Cozy Corner while we're open and just reserve it for per side driving. It's perfectly doable, William said yes right away, it's a great, they came up with a solution for us. And that's like, we do it, something we probably wouldn't have thought of unless, really got their attention, and they do it, and when they're closed, it's regular parking. And I guess what I mean by that is that we want to encourage these kinds of things that are relatively easy to do, that don't require a lot of cost investment, a lot of studies, and ways to facilitate, particularly now with COVID, but just always encourage use pedestrian access outside. I think the circle area, I'm reaching out to the county about that, about enhancing how the new building is going up, enhancing the walkability, the safety pedestrian access all around the circle that needs to be looked at. When they redid the circle, I personally think the circle is better than ever. It's larger, it's, instead of being in the center, way in the center, it's far in the middle of our communities. I drive through there at eight or eight-thirty every morning, and I get right through, and, you know, I mean, there's traffic like there, you know, there's always some, but it's just easy. And it's made it nicer, it's made it a center of our city. That said, there's still things that we need to improve on there. And one of them is to make sure that pedestrian accessibility across walkways provide pedestrian accessibility and continuity from Curtis Parkway to the circle. That was a project that was brought to the council by two residents here in Miami Springs, two young ladies that live in Miami Springs that are very much into sustainability and environment. And they wanted to continue the walkability of Curtis Parkway to the circle. They're the ones that actually sought out the funding for the project. It was a space challenge, and they applied for it. And they received a grant after they applied to the city and said, if you seek for this, you know, is this something that the city would pick? I said, sure, you find the money, it's safe, they would buy that project. Find the funding, you know, we'll do it. So this is, again, ideas from residents that we were able to implement. And I think improving the walkability around the circle, particularly as this new building and its very cleaner area, it's done, it is really important. So I'm reaching out to the county on that to see how they can do that because it is county road. But my thoughts on this was just, what can we do to make it more attractive? It needs to be consistent with code enforcement. It was really not consistent. We're telling one building, they can't do something, and then looking the other way where another building does something. It has to be, we have a code in place, you know, and we tell a building to do it, they have to do it, and every other building should be the same. They shouldn't be waiting for complaints, a lot of times we're waiting for the complaint to add budget. I don't know, we need another code enforcement officer to vote you. I suspect that it would be very helpful. And that might be something that I'd like us all to consider. You know, if there's consensus for that, for William, we're not taking a vote or anything, but just to look at the possibilities for a new budget. Because what I hear over and over again is, you know, the lack of code enforcement from the city residents that are... Say it's beautiful Miami Springs, but I think we can all agree there are a lot of areas that aren't that beautiful, you know, for one reason or another, or what you could call isolers, and we need to improve upon that.
I hear that a lot.
Before the board, if you sit on the board, you're in shock of how many cases, and these are time-consuming cases that, you know, one, one code enforcement.
They'll have a home, site maintenance or property. All you can do is find them. You have homes that are two hundred old, you can't find them. You can't find them. There are homes that you can't put, can't afford those on. Fires, and eventually, when they go to sell the property, if they have a problem, they can leave to space. But we have a lot of people that just don't, don't provide. We just be finding them, they're sold.
And we have a lot of businesses that aren't doing, I know recently, you know, we've talked about some businesses that have removed the signs. We had an ordinance that we put in place about two years ago that if a business moves within, I don't know, thirty, sixty days, they have to remove their sign. You shouldn't be advertising what failed at the site, you know, for years down the road. So now they removed the sign, but we had two businesses that had removed the sign and just left like fluorescent bulbs, something really ugly there in its place. So we reached out to them and said, you gotta put, you know, block it. You have to put a cover over it, so it's, you know, a little more aesthetically acceptable. I wouldn't say it's pleasing, but it's acceptable, and those kinds of things.
I'm sorry, I know that during our budget process, Ulysses mentioned that, you know, a lot of this would be helped if they did have extra help during the code enforcement. So maybe, maybe that could be something that we can, you know, an idea that we can...
For the budget, for next year's budget. I think it's something that would help, and for the business area, we're talking about improving business area, it's gotta be kept nice. And the only way to do that, some of these business owners are absentee business owners. We need to be, the other thing I wanted to mention with that is perhaps having consistency. And that might something, you know, I mean, for the council later, but Councilwoman Bravo had mentioned it. And I know I haven't noticed it, you know, the business moves out and it's empty inside. There should be something attractive on the windows, you know. Coming soon, Miami Springs, doing Miami Springs, sort of, you can, you know, white paper. But something that we're not looking into, you know, dark, vacant opening.
No, to the chair, part of the problem, not part of it, but my view, the majority of, most of these businesses are just that, the business. They don't own the building, they don't own the property. They'll be honest lies, and the people that own the property, these are the people you gotta go after. That's almost atrocious, which is correct. Legally, it's almost a bad, I guess you can do it legally, I guess there's a process for that, but I don't think the city's ever been very successful with that. Going after somebody in Michigan or in Westwood Drive. A few in parking joints.
But I think having an extra code enforcement on certain... I think what I believe one of the challenges, I guess, is that the code enforcement officers, because we are so limited, we only have two, one for east and one for west, they wind up having to just respond to complaints instead of being able to do the rounds to find the things that they would normally find, you know, if they weren't just constantly responding to complaints. So having an extra officer, hopefully.
That's a good point, yes. We want to look, they spent as much time in the office as we do.
If you think about it, having somebody that, and I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to do this as a job, I probably know the best way to do it, but have somebody maybe focus on the commercial code enforcement, right? You know, it's kind of different things, but certainly more manpower would help to get to, in that and everywhere.
All right, so if Councilmember Dust wanted to add?
I think I still have a second question.
And I guess the other thing is to encourage business owners, that we encourage people to, if you notice something, don't just complain that it's always been like that. Bring it to our attention, to city manager's attention, to code enforcement, so that we can do something, you know, I hear so often from, but, you know, it's been like that, every time I go by, it bothers me so much. And I go, who have you told? And they go, no one, but it's been like that for years. And I go, you know, we need eyes and ears, you know, we need help. And if you bring it to our attention, even one of us, we don't have to wait for a council meeting by any means to let William know, just pick up the phone and let him know. So many things get resolved like that, it's really surprising. I get a lot of emails back going, thanks so much, it was great. I'm so proud, you know, having our staff that we got it done, and the work that you took us. And communicating to us that evidence is needed.
But for the chair, yeah, I think that was my bullet point, that we need to do more stings or... But when you call that, you have a sting, but a sweep, or more of those. I think that was one of my suggestions I offered. And that goes for the police too, when we get to that later. Speak on that later.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so let's do the next item, which is communication and social media. Outreach to the community. My point on that is I would really like to improve our city's social media presence, email availability to our residents. We're really lacking in that, we need a lot more to communicate better. Councilmember Dust was said, right now, we have a list of how to contact some residents that are listed for emergencies, if there's an emergency, I mean, there's something. We need to expand upon that and use it for everything, because that we communicate with them. It's readily available, it's expensive means. And we probably need to explore some cost investing in some program to do that.
We're working on that. We talked with, what, anybody using some different, but basically trying to work with current system that we've had, that we've predicted, which now turns out won't be enough. And so we're looking at putting out something so that people can subscribe. Do us their email, develop a database of all those emails, do flash, more flash, even if you text messages to get the message out to whoever supports it. So we're working on that.
And that's, we believe, you know, we did communication with the residents of this city. I'm so impressed by just the rec center, because they have every single week, I mean, fun things that are just, and we want to make sure that in our meetings, the comments, Councilmember Dust was...
I'm sorry?
What did you want to talk about that?
This?
Yes, about the social media.
Yeah, no, I think, as you've already pointed out, I mean, clearly, we're gonna need more resources to be able to do that. Whether that's adding a person in addition to the capacity, whatever the city manager feels is something that should come to us. And we should look at it because in order to enhance those capacities, we're gonna have to enhance the ability to have people be able to do that, or expand. You know, person or whatever.
Perhaps it's for our investment in software capabilities and staff.
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's, it'd be good to have, see how we improve and expand.
I think the next agenda item is really the same as, I should put it in with C and E for me. Of course, no, 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 go ahead.
All right, it's an item that I missed to put on the agenda today, but to kind of go back to what you're saying about circle, it's big, it's beautiful. I mean, that is our central station, that is Miami Springs. But there's nothing that, when we drive into Miami Springs, that, I know that I'm in Miami Springs, but that doesn't equal specifically, I don't think that it complements the heart of the city. I know we've had a couple items there that have come and gone. I was doing a little research, I looked at the Historic Preservation Facebook page that it did. And I found some really interesting things, and I ran across the original bandstands, which I provided pictures to everybody. It's pueblo style, which is something that in our ordinances, I mean, you know, we, they, you know, for the first compliment, our Miami Springs history and the pueblo style. So I know that we're living modern times, we all... Our Miami Springs history and the pueblo style, so I know that we have, we're living modern times, a little more modern, but if there's a little accent that we can add to our city. Would be really beautiful and would complement the history. Uh, that's because it's big on Art Two, so I know that, you know, see something that gives that charm, um. To our circle, I mean, this one was gorgeous, there's not a lot of monuments here, but you can see how monuments are being, literally put a full-size hand in there, you can have. Schools perform in there during Christmas time, you can have a bunch of real things going on there, it's just, it's beautiful, you have, um. I don't know, we can replicate it, just like when we brought up the first mansion, it's gorgeous, when people come in, uh. To the city, you know, you think about, you'll, you'll think about, oh, you know, there's a pueblo style history here, then, uh, they get together with the first mansion, it just brings some sort of art, art. It's actual, um, takes up to our city, which I feel that would kind of, why not pick a monument? So you have this beautiful monument coming through to the weather, uh, warm and warm. And I just thought it would be something nice to maybe look into, uh, of possible, uh, grounds. I know that there's a historic preservation grant, I don't know if it's for repiting, um, historical access to the city, I don't know, mentioned a lot of space grants. I would like to explore this option, this can go through hurricanes, it's long-lasting, it won't fall apart, I think it's just so gorgeous, um. To bring this back, and it's easily maintained, there's nothing to it. And I just wanted to see if the council would consider retaining, bringing something back to our city like this, because. We don't really have anything other than, you know, maybe a handful of houses, uh, of the city was founded through pueblo style architect, architecture. And, um, I think it would be a very beautiful staple for many, many years to come. This aerial view is gorgeous. And I think our city deserves it.
I, I, I know, I know, Chair, I swear that, uh. We've always tried, everything we've done in this town to, to, to provide some type of footprint, or what you're suggesting. I think you see evidence at every major project, sort of, not full, 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 full blow, but just here at least, judging the twenties, thirties. But, uh, again, I'm all, I'm all for that. I know that we can score this in the past, uh, with developers and builders will value, if they want a state period, type of looks. So they have the cover one, so it's really not exactly. Okay. I'm not disagreeing, I'm agreeing, I'm agreeing with you.
Just, it's Japanese, it's beautiful, and it's, you know, especially for our gateway areas, it's developing, it's just something. Time moving, the people are, I just, it'll just create a nice, um, especially our own business, could you imagine this, it's so beautiful.
Actually, you know, you, you, you make an excellent.
It's the cans that they come out and they, they set up right here.
You know, the, the entrances we have to Miami Springs right now, coming over Park Royal, uh, coming from DG, coming across the bridge. The, the various ways, or morning side, there's one, um, if you should think about redoing that. You know, it's just, well, it is now, it's like a wall of coral, right? It's like, look. Can we do that? Carry that forward.
That's a great idea, and actually, that was one of the things that I put on here, is the city entry points, um, like, you know, I find that. We know we're entered Miami Springs, you know, people that are visiting know they entered Miami Springs, it says Miami Springs, but there should be something that as soon as you enter our entry points, you should go. Wow, what is this place? This is so nice, this is, oh, it's Miami Springs, and, you know, and, and, um, our signs. And the signs aren't that attractive, though the one by the golf course, I think when we entered from Curtis. Um, you know, uh, from, what's her, she's street, putting art on Curtis. That is, you see the golf course, you see people, like, you know, and that's like, wow, this is really pretty. But I don't, we don't have that anywhere else, um, right now, coming in from the bridge, people will be attracted, even once three hours construction.
Chair, my wife, too, and my girl, all the time about that bridge, and about how lackluster, that's it. It's, it's a, it, it has caring. It just needs a little tender loving care, right? Because it is, talk about time periods, right?
Well, it's historic, that.
Yeah, it's historic, and it's caring, but, uh.
But perhaps, uh.
Along the lines of with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, I don't know, like, our entry points are all.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And I think it would give that distinction of, sort of, you know, and, and also bring that question up, you know, always. Why isn't it that the, the, you know, it's the style, you know, and then start seeing it, the, the city.
Right.
Right, I have a little structure, I like, or, yes, like, you're.
Stay there if I may.
So, yes, sir.
Alright, so, I'm right now on Google Street, and I'm looking at the view when you cross the bridge. And I hadn't, I hadn't really noticed it until you mentioned it, but when you're looking towards the circle and you just go over the bridge, there's basically. A median and there's three, uh, light posts and some shrubs. And there isn't a palm tree until after you cross the crosswalk.
Way down for the.
And, you know, one of the things that makes Curtis Parkway what it is, is just these big, just the oak trees, maybe we could look into. Public Works planning some trees, I mean, the median looks a little big. But I think that's, that's the entrance, and I'm looking at it right here, I mean, I'm looking at it, and I think that's why it doesn't really speak to anything, because there's no trees. There's two little palm trees on the way, that probably aren't there, this is more street view, but, because the building's going up. But that median in between, as you're going towards the circle, there's nothing there but shrubs until, until you get to the circle. And I think if there were some trees there, that it would, it would make it, you know.
And think about, we come in on East Drive, when you come in on East Drive from the south, or, it's a major road, there's nothing there, perhaps we could do something now when we redo these.
Middle school and then this.
When you come in, uh, the, the north of Louisiana, south of Louisiana, excuse me, over by Palm Steno. You have to sprint to all those areas.
There's nothing.
Something on morning side.
This kind of, uh, uh, that would just really pull the city together.
Like Royal Palms Waltz, maybe, like.
I mean, we're a tree for the USA, so you would think that. Some trees.
Some trees, but perhaps would, if I spare, uh, Bravo was suggesting, yes, the welcome sign. To have elements of this pueblo mission style. At all the entries, and, uh, I think with the circle of the center, that's something that would have looked at, at the grant application, or. You know, if there's some favorite, um. Like, two projects in Miami Springs that were with the public space challenge, which are perfect, I don't think they're doing it, right now, the public space challenge was Miami Foundation. It's a boat ramp revitalization that was public space charge. And the crosswalk that those young ladies, residents, you know, applied for it, they. They came to council, they said, this is what we'd like to do, we're applying for this grant, we'd like to do it, and. It was, you know, yes, but, so, um.
There are a couple of good ideas on you.
Okay, so, um, can we? Uh, perhaps starting with East Drive, and we do East Garden, South Rio, Louisiana, I'm wondering if we can go in. The signs of, especially something with a pueblo mission style signage of welcome to Miami Springs and to Miami Springs.
Can, can we ask Public Works, is that median, as you go in, like, I come into Miami before the circle, it's light enough to.
Put it open?
Well, that's why, so I don't treat Miami more space, but even some Royal Palms, right, because the.
Royal Palms are.
It's a root ball, so.
Royal Palms, the palms will go on cars. We had them over there, and we were, we got sued, yeah, so because the palms, because the palm leaves go on cars.
Sorry, um, I met with Public Works last week, and I mentioned when you said Walter, and I see one of their comments was that it was, um. The obstruction of, for traffic, that they had to see that pass through. But again, there's a bunch of bushes there, so we talked about ripping that out and then just adding another tree, and the trees grew up, because if we're talking about visibility. Bushes, like, I still get something to that side.
I mean, the bushes are growing, too. But, you know, just, just a thought, I know that everybody appreciates the tree.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that you can see crossing, coming south, um. Over highly, I called that, that stretch there, as you can see. But anything higher than that would make sense, anything lower would want to be visible.
Yeah.
So, well, those are all.
You think on, on the city signs, uh.
Yes, and perhaps also because, uh, and I think they would like this project is the Historic Preservation Board. Because we're talking about the pueblo mission, you know, putting in something with that, I, I think maybe perhaps even. A combination of both boards or the Historic Preservation, because, uh, they would probably like to have input on, you know, a sign that would incorporate. So could you put that on the agenda, um, for, for, if that's, uh, something that we'd like them to explore, and it's supposed to be a great thing for them to explore.
Except the economic advice, we just.
I think your place is pretty great, and Historic Preservation, uh, would probably love the opportunity to.
Play in.
Explore this. Or, and perhaps also, uh, Vice Mayor, if you want to. Go to the meeting and explain to them about the center, the zeeple, and their thoughts on that, you know? That's probably something you'd have to explore to grant a few education members of, for the circle. All those things to me, um, you know, we might think, well, there we have it, really, we want our city to stand out, all these other cities, so, like, all these things to, uh, visit. A little community like Miami Springs, except for, you need little touches that. The tree canopy, I think, uh, that was just that, uh. We need to continue to grow our tree canopy, um, we allocate a lot of money to tree maintenance, because, um. You know, we know we have to, just doesn't help to try to plant new trees if our existing trees are dying, or, you know, need trimming, and they're gonna be not building the next door. Um, consistently, that, that's, but, I guess what I'd like to suggest is that, that's always a priority for us, just, you know, improving our tree canopy, expanding upon it. Not just, um, being content that we're Tree City USA. Right, our idea should be to, every year, hopefully, increase the percentage of tree canopy.
Try to accomplish that, use the question.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Talking about tree, um. Going back to what I mean when Public Works, Lisa, is, I guess she already received, um, she applied for the funds for the tree planting. I think there's quite a way they're really being on top of that item. I think that her biggest, um, setback is trying to find out which, um, residents would like a tree in front of their home, and stuff like that. So I suggested that maybe we could put out our social media, you know, Louisiana, um, we have a, a tree, if you would like, or whatever, or else, because it's a lot of work, you know. For them to help me on farms, or talking to people to see, maybe they want a tree in front of their house, just to kind of like help them out at the border. So that we can, or, um, to, for the, and start helping, so I think I did a tree document on our social media.
And, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, we also, we have one, another thing in place right now, where we have an intrusive species, a tree in front, the city will replace that. If I had bolted on it, might not say it, Black Olives and their history, their life books, the city did it, and they did a great job. And I had to wait in line, just like anybody, a wheel, a wait in line, because I can't do it overnight for you, but, the city is, is consistently done that, I've seen all of it now, it's great.
So, it's a suggestion to put something on that about, you know, what you're just did, I know that they probably have a waiting list of, you know, of people. That have big trees, but, whatever, you know. Um, okay, so the next, uh, item is F from Councilman Dust, where, where Mayor Renee Thomas's office.
I just, uh, I just wasn't sure where we were with this. And that's why I brought it up, I know that, uh, we talked about it a little bit. We talked about it on several occasions in relation to, uh. Additional funding for, 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 for. Police Department, so forth, and, 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 in fact, we raised it with her when she came for a first meeting. To see if there was a way in which we could work. To move this along. And, and I know that the, fraud is big, I understand that this is the Convention Bureau and taxes, and the county taxes and so forth. But, uh, we do not allow hotels in Miami Springs, maybe more than proportionate of other places in the county.
Yes.
Where we can, and, you know, uh, but, it's, by, by my, uh, my estimations for my conversation with William. These, uh, these hotels are paying, uh, quite a bit of money in bed tax, I mean, billions of dollars. And, uh, while, uh, while the project closed those streets, which I think is very good, I told them, they were very, as you know, very happy with the fact that we. Closed those streets, and the kind of incidents that were happening.
Have been reduced.
Have been reduced, so the presence of the police has been proportionately reduced, the, the, the. Fact of the matter is that having twenty-one hotels, if that's the right number, still attracts a lot of people and, and, and many things. And, and, and we still have to respond, our police department still has to respond to situations there. And we're not benefiting at all, I mean, I, I understand the big problem, Texas, we're not benefiting at all under that tax. And I know the mayor was open to, when she, when she was here, uh, at her very first meeting, was open to the idea of talking. I said, I'm not sure where it is, but, where it is, I know that you, I think I've had some conversations.
I'll give you just some background, it's the tourist development tax, the state. Law, that, um, the, the state legislature, they didn't place them on, type those same counties will collect. Tourist development tax, um, from every hotel, so it's basically a room rate for, you know, occupancy. And that money will be used by the counties to promote tourist development and including, uh, part of it can be used for sports, uh, for sporting arenas and stuff, just. Some of that money is how, um, Miami Marlins take it, it's built, but the state law says the county, the money will go to the counties.
Yes.
And the counties will use it for tourist development. And so the county has been very reluctant to give up money that they're using in fact, when we first started pursuing it a few years ago, they go, that money's already. allocated for the next five years. And, um, you know, of course, they're not gonna, you know, release their fingers from this money that's coming to them. Um, so what we did is, we worked with it at the state level with Representative Brian Avila. Um, for two years, and he was very interested in, you know, getting us, uh, our fair portion of those taxes, we're the ones that are providing these services. To the tourists, and the tourists don't come here, they go to Miami Beach, and they go to Wynwood, and, you know, uh, wherever, and we're providing for their security. And we're not being subsidized for that, um, but it's a state law, so it really has to be changed at the state level. Where it allows, um, you know, the cities to be compensated or receive part of that revenue. Um, in twenty twenty. We were really, really, really close, this is right before the pandemic, we were so close, Representative Avila and Senator Diaz. Had it in the state, it was the last item discussed on the Senate floor at midnight, and it went on and on and on. I can tell you, I have to tell it has it several times, it's just so long, and every time I was on a plane over there. Everyone on that plane practically were lobbyists, Bill Talbert from the, uh. Miami Beach, uh, Convention Visitors and Convention Center, and his contingency of lobbyists, and all this going there to fight it. Because it was a huge amount of money, because it wouldn't be just Miami Springs, it would be all the hotels, I mean, all the cities in Miami Springs would get some of that money back, and it wouldn't go to the. Greater Miami, uh, uh, Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau.
I, I remember they took a whole page.
Is that they were, a whole page, what's sad is that they were using the money collected from our hotels to pay the lobbyist in case, right, to talk all that. Um, at the eleventh hour, on the Senate floor, and, and Representative Avila said to Diaz, I cannot say enough how much they pushed this along, I was astounded, it had never gone that far.
Didn't have the votes.
Um, at the eleventh hour, um, the Senate just, there were some other issues, and they just, uh, and, and it was, it was basically the lobbyists, and then the effort by. The Greater Miami and, uh, Beach and, um, Greater Miami, uh, Visitors and, and Convention Center. That they backed up, we got really, really close, what happened after that, that was in February, twenty twenty, the pandemic hit March. The hotels were closed. Um, there were no hotels, so who knows, even if it had passed, what would have happened?
It, it was like a non-issue.
It was like a non-issue, and it certainly was a non-issue in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, because the hotels now. It was like a non-issue and it certainly was a non-issue in 2020 and 2021 because the hotels now in 2021, they've started revamping. So there hasn't been a real, there hasn't been.
Really effort.
A great opportunity to revisit it because all we're gonna hear is, well, we're in the middle of pandemic, the hotels, the convention. Tourism in Miami Beach, Miami is struggling, you know, we need that money. I think now is the time to revisit it. I'm not sure that Mayor Levine is the one to go because I can't see her, it's nice that she is releasing money that's coming to her. Well, to give back to us, but you never know, she's obviously her own person and it's been very, very much on board and working with municipalities. So I guess Councilman, I would suggest.
Maybe there's. With some information, I know, so obviously, after the beginning of the pandemic, we were still in it, right? It is what we were having, you know, there was a influx of the, the, the type of patrons of our hotels also changed. And the other things were really hot for a while, and that goes not to say that everything is a pieces and cream now. But I mean, even I think the, the chief will tell you that things have slowed down. Because there was a point where he was saying that, you know, as soon as nuisance abatement, because I can tell you eleven places off the top of my head. And then, and then when this pavement, again, there were none. So I think, I think also it's changed, at least from the, I talked to the general manager of one of the hotels on Thirty-Sixth Street, that things were kind of trying, starting to, to go a little bit back to normal. Because, because, you know, just the clientele had changed. And that was a big push for the bed tax because we were at our wits end in terms of what to do. The last that I'd heard, and I've had discussions with Jose, I've had discussions with our lobbyists. The last I heard was that, that maybe the, the next tactical, because basically when that got shot down at the state, it was, you know, we had to basically start over. And I think that one of the things that was mentioned to me is that we, we kind of win it alone at the end there. And that maybe another way to go about this is for the city to, and Heidi, correct me if I'm wrong, we basically draft some kind of resolution. That we're interested in, in giving it a go again. Then once we have it in resolution form, then take that to the League of Cities, approach, approach the, those municipalities that also stand to gain. Because not everybody's in the same, you know, in the same position and there are other municipalities that are in our position that, that stand to gain the most. And obviously there's certainly four cities that are grandfathered in that they still get the, right, they get to keep there. But then that's, that was kind of, you know, where I last left it was like, well, you know, if you were kind of come up with a resolution as a council. Said you want to give it a go again, go to the League of Cities, try to draw up support, talk to other municipalities, approach those municipalities that. That you would have a common interest in making that happen. And then starting the process again of going to the state, but, you know, but kind of arm in arm with some other cities that, that could, that could go, go with us.
I know that.
Now it would be a perfect time because like I said, we had the pandemic after that, there's no way that you're going to, that's anyone that, money wasn't needed to draw tourism back to Miami. And in its past year, but I think now is a good time to, I know Representative Avila, after that post, you know, he said, you know. That's the big effort that they did, you know, it wasn't something that I felt was going to address again, you know. To me, we were that close, it could have been, it could have went through, we didn't get, but.
Is it something we can work on? Could we?
Yes, let's do a resolution.
Just stating the resolution is an excellent idea, I, I, I will be careful about trying to bring too many other municipalities involved like this, I suppose that will be different taxation. But with this, this is funding for us, not like, if you approach twelve cities, want to do this, they're going to break down. But, but if we can get away with it, the way we did it in Corporated and it almost passed, you know, we were this far, she definitely right.
And, you know, and the thing is, from our standpoint, what we're doing is subsidizing, providing, to me, it is part of the tourism, because we're providing for the safety of the tourists.
Of the tourists, yes.
Isn't that part of tourism to Miami, you know, to Miami is, you know, drawing, having a place trapping them and providing for their safety. You know, should be part of, so the way I kept presenting it is this is part of tourism. It is, you know, and it would be used to subsidize the absorbent and lease expenses that, that we have at the hotels responding to. And then we had the chief come up with reports of how many calls they had to the hotels. And it wasn't just to, you know, the smaller hotels, the nicer, much nicer hotels had just as many calls. On, you know, purse stolen, luggage stolen, a car broken into, you know, these routine things, but still the drain on our police services. So let's do the resolution, I think it's a great idea, let's pursue it that way. It's true, we didn't have the support of very many other cities. The cities statewide that stood to gain from it, their legislators were, you know, for it because it wasn't just us that were, you know, there are cities all over the state. In certain conditions that would have benefited from it, others, they have very few hotels, Doral. You know, they don't care about getting that money from their hotels, the hotels that they have, even if they have substantial number, but not based on, so it's not something.
Mayor? So what Councilwoman Bahad was saying is absolutely right, we, we did talk about trying to engage other cities. To Councilman Best's point, I, I appreciate the, the, the sentiment. That, you know, you're trying to garner funds for your city, but because it is a state law, the idea is, is that we need support from other cities as well. So that at the state level, we're not just, it's not just our representative fighting for the one city. It should be something that is really going to benefit a number of cities. So the, the strategy behind that was, let's get some, not just in Miami Dade County. But make this an issue that perhaps other cities can stand to benefit from statewide. And so it becomes an issue that isn't just being led by, you know, this Miami Dade city. And maybe it's not an issue of importance to some of the legislators up north until it becomes an issue for their cities. So that was the, the sentiment behind, you know, garnering the support. You did in October, when you adopted your resolution. Setting forth your 2022 legislative priorities, we did include a, a point in there. About supporting amending the state statute so that it would require a fair and proportional distribution of funding to municipalities. So that is already there, you do have a resolution, I think it was from 2018. I may be off on the timeline, but you did have a resolution that sort of set forth a little more about what the bed tax history is and what the city wanted done. I think at this point, we probably can prepare a new resolution, but I think we should be working with the city's lobbyists. Jose Fuentes from Becker to determine what strategy he might suggest is best. Legislative session started last week. So it may be a little bit too late to get a bill in for this session. So I, I, I don't know where we're at with that, but I, I suspect it may be a little too late at this point for this session. But I think that getting the.
Right, and it might be, and also Representative Avila knows, you know, kind of thought this already and may not, this last session. Be wanting to put as much attention toward this, but for next session, but I am going to be pulling up, we have day days coming up in the League of Mayors shortly thereafter. So it's something that I would definitely start bringing up and trying to, and I suggest everyone else do too. Get as much support from other cities for this, there's so many cities that would benefit and, you know, some to a greater extent like we would and others to a lesser extent, but it's still money that would be coming to them. But it's right, who cares?
Perhaps something could recommend there, some, you know, who need to approach, you know, you know, the state level, you know. Best, but, but I think that, I think identifying who, who we have common cause with would be helpful.
I think Becker probably helped.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I, I think too that this is something we can't let die, just because we weren't six states. I think we have to resurrect this and we have to keep on it, I think is a rule. This makes sense to the council, to the city.
Our city is entitled to this, our residents are entitled to this.
Mayor, you were, when you first ran for office and were on the council, big on this.
And I still think, I think the only reason we took this break is because the reality of the COVID. You know, their, their tax revenues, their tourism revenues went way down and it wasn't the tourism, so to be saying that we want our fair share. After we had that through the state. I will say that with Councilman Basquez, you said about talking to Mayor Levine, I know when she was writing for mayor. I spoke with her at length. And I supported her, for mayor, and I had mentioned this about the annexation and something that, you know, was very important to us, it was a big issue for us. So she's already, she may remember it, she may not, but she's already familiar with it and I think it doesn't hurt to approach her again, she's been very, I think, open minded about. Which is really refreshing about working with cities. We've always had support of our commissioner, the left commissioner, Sosa, of course, that I need from whom the mayor's also now.
Sure, so I'm glad I raised this point, but I think that from what I'm hearing. This might be a multi effort that we should look at. Even sitting here thought about the whole notion of tourism and broadening that definition. That we support tourism through security, thanks to public safety. I'm also wondering, Mr. Broden, in future conversations, if we should be approaching this funding in terms of enhancing tourism in the city. And, and requesting support and funds for that because that would also give us some flexibility and some other funds. But I did have a question for William because it came up at a talk I gave at the Rover Club a couple of months ago. They were, I was talking about this, they asked me about this and I didn't have the answer. Question was this, well, what about Miami Beach, really huge hotels? They must be, they must be paying all kinds of.
Their grandfather got one of those.
So they get, they do get funds because they're.
They had, uh, they were in the north in some places, or twenty-four, twenty-eleven or whatever it's happened that. So they were already collecting the taxes of that and it was either Ball Harbor or, or, or one of those.
The city's already had Miami Beach. Cities Miami Beach, Surfside and Ball Harbor are.
Because they already had.
And that's why those three cities are able to collect their own tourist tax.
Don't approach them.
But one thing with the tourism, with the tourism, when, when I first was on council and this was a big issue for me because it, and it's always been, it's not, to be fair, I'm not the one that started up. I mean, this is something that very past councils have addressed consistently. I think in 2020, we got really, really close, was the first time that we, was before, it was more like, you're never gonna get that, you know, don't worry about that, that's never gonna happen, you know, and all this. And we've been very persistent over the years and now it's starting, nobody's saying, you're never gonna get that. They're saying, well, you know, it may happen, it may not, this is, you know, the roadblocks, but. One of the things that I reached out to through Commissioner Sosa, saying, you know, we wanted some of that from the county, we'd like to have, have them share their bounty. With us and she, since that money goes to the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. I met with them, they came here, Bill Talbert and his assistant, Rolando. And told us everything that they do for us to promote tourism in Miami Springs. And they have a lot of information where they're showing how the money that they're collecting, they're using it to promote, they have a lot of publications where Miami Springs is here, Miami Springs is here. They, if you've been downstairs in our lobby, outside of the lobby says a welcome center, they turned it into a welcome center, they provided, you know, this little welcome center, brochures and all. And, you know, we waited like a year or two to give them a chance to improve the number of tourists that come to Miami Springs for our residents, to, you know, to our restaurants and stuff. And after like two years, I met with them, I said, very nice what you've done, you haven't moved the needle at all, you know, nothing's happened. So what you do, you do a really good job for other cities, it works really well and our city doesn't, it's useless. So we want some of that money, we're still providing police support, we're not getting any benefits from it. And we're providing for the safety of tourism, which is part of tourism, trapping tourism.
And our hotels are the favorite member of the group.
Yes, so they even arranged meetings with the Miami Hotel Association, it turns out we only have two hotels in all Miami Springs at the time. That are members of that because they have to pay to remember, so I'm not saying we can't go there again, but, you know, I always think that's what happened before, we can try again. Just letting you know that as far as realistically, I mean, there's not a whole lot of tourists that are going to put Miami Springs on their list of. You know, things to do when there's three days in Miami or even a week in Miami. The hotels, we, we reached out to the hotels and tried to encourage them that when tourists are asking, you know, the front desk where to go. But we don't really do it anymore, they look on your phone, you know, it's not like you go to the front desk and say, and you suggest something. So there again, our media presence.
Yes.
If we could improve our media presence, then when you look on your phone and you're staying at a hotel on Thirty-Sixth Street. And you don't even know Miami Springs is right behind you. You look on here, you go, wow, there's all these and it's walkable and it's a beautiful place and, you know, there's so much restaurants, let's try one piece in there, you know, that's a high rate. And that's where we need to, I think, with our media presence, market ourselves better. For these tourists also, it's an opportunity that I don't think is that difficult to do, we're just not doing it. But Councilman Basquez, would you like to reach out to, you know, Mayor Levine, let her know that this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Since all that, um, I think you.
Omar Salcalla.
Just check out the resolution, let's just tack it, the most slides again. Okay, the next agenda item, creation of exercise zones and first parkway medium, mud lawn road. Residents, Councilman Basquez.
Yeah, I, this is, after I submitted it, I've been thinking about it a lot, this needs to cook a little bit more, but. Actually, the idea came to me from my doctor, Ida Moser, who was a practice group, who had his office here in him and his wife. And long term, Miami Springs resident, we were talking about some things last week and he suggested this and I said, you know, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna include that. And basically the idea is this, when I was walking more regularly on the parkway. You know, park there and it's not, it, it could be an area that you could do a little more physical work. You know, there's some wooden planks that you can use for stretching, I used to use those for stretching. Maybe pull up some, you know, to some other things that might, then I thought, well, then two things came to mind later in the week. One, COVID and, you know, cleaning equipment, number one, two, is, is really to, 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 to talk to, to William and Omar. About the idea of having smaller areas right, right here on the parkway and also for those who exercise, I'd love them to find an appropriate space and what could be for them. For folks, you know, what would folks like to use? I know I used to do the pushups on wood, so not the most comfortable one, but it is, it's there, but, you know, that's the kind of thing that he was talking about. So it's something that I would like to think about more and maybe talk to folks and then bring it up at other point because I think for folks who are already on the parkway and. Right, people jogging and walking, you know, it would be an added incentive to do some other kinds of exercises while, while they're there.
For my side of the park. Omar. The issue is always with, but you think. But it has to be ADA compliance.
Yes, yes.
So that, that increases the force.
Yes.
It's a matter of how many, how much we have.
And, and when you're talking about ADA compliance, it's gotta be out, it's outdoors, so one of the complexities of having something that's ADA compliance, that is gonna be out.
William, this might be something we had a gentleman from Doral reach. William, this might be something we, um, had, uh, a gentleman from Doral, we talked to, said went to newspaper in Doral and has a lot of sponsors, um, that have sponsors, you know, like Humana and, I don't know, Blue Cross and stuff and, um, said that they would probably, you know, maybe interested in helping the city with projects where we need a sponsor, uh, corporations sponsors, particularly things, you know, dealing with recreation, health, seniors. So this may be something for you, if you could reach out to, or hear each other. And, and get grants for that because it seems like these big companies, you know, um, that's something that they're interested in doing for communities and, you know, funding it. Right, exactly, and they, you know, so, um. Pardon me?
Is their name up there?
Right, exactly. Yes, go ahead. These look exercising so, so.
Are they still there? I, I thought I provided it.
Okay, the next agenda item, the War Memorial, um, Councilman Vazquez.
Uh, very briefly, Mayor, thank you. Um, I thought I just throw this on there, I thought it happened, uh, going to tell how you're ready. My understanding is that's the verbal of first of the committee, so we're, we're hopeful going forward. Uh, at present, we have fourteen hundred and thirty dollars in the account. Most recently, Max Bylum and his gracious husband and his family have, uh, put a nice sign by the Bylum's, I've seen it going in, uh, of the proposed memorial and at each of the checkout counters is a thing where you can offer a trillion dollar or five dollars, and I'll still be on there, you can put it over there, it's ten on the back. Anyway, that's available now, so I, I went over first, that text, of course, the Bylum, who's on the, that's where we are with it.
That's, that's really going to be a, a showstopper when you go up and down Curtis.
I certainly hope so, Mayor.
And I think it's gonna be a kind of, uh, gathered place where people, you know, like now they say, you know, by clock, by the monument.
And, and, you know, the other thing is, we have to be so grateful again for people like the Bylum family and, uh, the Wolf's, Costas, Costas, Brandenburg, and, and even Shippur is the architect of the Pope on the office, along the way, right at the. Just been a, a collective project and part of many, many citizens.
Okay, um, so the next item is, um, Councilman Vazquez, oh, did you have something else?
Real quick, the manager just showed me and I, it's on our website. He showed it to me.
The one, one?
No.
Oh.
Oh, the Mylums.
Oh, Mylums, yes, 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 I saw that, yes.
Yeah, Mylums said that they were gonna post it on their website.
Yeah, let's put, let's put the rendition.
But also the rendition of the work, because if not, it's like you just think of, but when you see that rendition.
Now, when you go into Mylums, the rendition is there and.
But also on our website, if there was a, a picture of the rendering, perhaps to put on there too.
Eric has that, I guess.
Okay, the next agenda item is Councilman Vazquez, item.
This is something that I would never normally bring up, and I'm not gonna be here, you guys aren't. And I'd like you to think about, and it's fine, and effort that you spent representing people in the city, and I think you earned tremendously, as, as am I, under. I recognize that it is an issue that has to go to the voters if it exceeds five percent of an increase, but I think that our time is a little more valuable. Personally, relative to going forward and attracting people to wanna do what we do right now. I think it's a monetary compensation, as it were. It's a tough thing for somebody to ask for an increase for their own pay, I understand that, but I'm in a position where I can do it right now because I go away. That's tough. But it's something for you to think about, because if you've had the money that we're paid by the city, what we do and that, and most all of us, my, my time up here that I see through various councils, uh, really do put in time and effort and, and really work hard to try to do it right. I'll leave it there, I'm not gonna say no where else. I know it's a very contentious political issue, but it does need to be said, and that's why I'm not here tonight. Your consideration, not mine.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, maybe, uh, the city manager could, could give us an idea of what the history of the compensation has been, where there's been increases and what other municipalities have the same.
You know, the residents.
And I think.
And again, it probably has to do with the fact, part of the. Even vote yourself, we can vote ourselves a increase up to and under five percent, but anything more than five percent, five percent. But anything over that, it's gonna go to the voters. It's like, it's anxious, as I said. Come in.
Hey, bundling city debt, somebody gave coming prime rate increase.
This was just, uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, this, this, this item that I put on here was just, uh, just a reminder and it, uh, obviously there's no need to remind William, he's so good at doing this ridiculous over the years, how he's bundled one project to another to another, and recognized one to two percent, uh, savings in H R, the prime rate and stuff. It's just wonderful, that was just, just. You have an aside to continue to make that, that's all, got it.
Um, okay, the next one, too, Councilman Vazquez, with speeding enforcement.
Yes, just quickly, uh, again, back to what we were talking about before, with code enforcement, compliance, I should say. Uh, it applies, as I mentioned earlier, also to these, where, uh, sting operations around town, unannounced. And, uh, of course, we've all looked at the police reports through the months, we see that when they do these, they're very effective. You don't see speed for a while, not that it's not gonna come back again, but just to stay on topic, that was my point, just to advise, advise the chief of boarding them. And they are, they are stepping up.
Let to me. And that right lane. When the light is red of those two lanes, it's green for us to go. We have five cars stopped.
Left direction.
It took us eight minutes to get through there because there were five cars that were going into the other lanes. There were no police presence, but I know that I've seen the signs, the three hundred dollar fine if you block. You know, so anyway, so my wife like share this.
Councilman, when I see that, it knows um that it's blocked up a lot and I'm driving through there, I mean call William and ask them, can you send an officer?
That's not fair.
No, not because of me, I'm already through it, but since because it's really backed up because I think, you know, these kinds of uh. And it'll never be a hundred percent, but. You know, it's like you said with the sting operations, you know, you uh go through an area, go through an area, one day you get a ticket, it stays in your mind. And after that, you tell you, you know what, and you tell other people, you know, don't see, I got a ticket last time that I was going through here, so. It's not a hundred percent of time, we can't.
Years ago, New York City had a big problem with people blocking lanes and. The light changing, they're in the middle and they started doing those diagonal lines. If you're there when the light changes, that's an automatic ticket. So maybe just a little something, again, once people get ticketed a couple of times or a couple of people. Because it's only gonna increase.
But I think what we noticed.
You could actually send someone out there.
As soon as they see. Are there, everyone kind of gets back into their spaces and.
Can I add something? So just like the. You know, you hear this popular trope, just like people saying like they're not, the code enforcement isn't doing anything, but if you come to a code enforcement board, maybe if there are people being. Impressive. And and I feel like when when I've seen reports that get uh sent out from the chief. About all the tickets that they're writing and the things that the board members are doing, it seems to me like it's contrary to that, you know. Popular. It's not to say, you know, it's not to say that that you can't say, hey, you know, like I'm listening, people are going too fast and like it doesn't mean that there aren't. Uh that we shouldn't listen feedback about about some hot areas, but. In those reports of the speeding tickets, is that something that could be posted? But is it posted, do we post those?
But you're saying should be posted on social media.
Or or on the website, right? Like I know, I know that there were some old reports of like, uh, you know, like arrest statistics and things like that. From previous years, but I think that that maybe if you posted that. You know, that I think that it would. Yeah, people won't realize, yeah, it's like people saying that we don't do code enforcement and yet like people getting, you know, fined thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. Um, so. Uh, I just feel like it would kind of ties into the kind of communication if we could, if we could post like all the tickets that are being given out. Because a lot of people surprisingly telling you, like, well, what's the police doing? And like, you know, they don't, they're not remember Mizzou, and you know, everybody remembers. You know, the the golden age. Uh, but I feel like they do, they do a lot and uh and they, I think it would help for people to. To see what's actually.
Perhaps without details, but just, you know, this.
Yeah, like this many tickets for, you know, and I think it might even serve as a deterrent if you're putting that out. Uh, because right now, you know, people, people kind of speak without without knowing the the old stats.
And in all fairness, a number of the.
It's like, it's like, uh, it's like the parking problem, I can't find the parking space.
Today.
This is, oh, I didn't see him give a ticket in my block, so they're not doing it.
Through the chair, yes. I know how that can be a little labor intensive, so maybe we'll be on the website, there can be a tab for police enforcement. And then um chief wants to talk to them, he can send those monthly reports to me guys and it can just be on this tab. They can link them forward and post on social media, you know. Um, this day for if you would like to keep abreast of what's going on in your police enforcement department, please visit our city website. And um the PDS will.
So I I know that on social media and I, you know, obviously, I think a lot of people are on social media these days, I'm not saying that you don't already know. But I know we post like, you know, arrests that we make and I think I I see it as a good thing, right? Like, hey, this is us being proactive, look at how we're deterring crime. Some people are always gonna take that and be like, look what's, you know, like, look what's happening on thirty sixth street and. Everything else is happening, I I think that if we posted. Uh, again, some of the reports that I've seen, like, so. On this day, we were here, we, you know, over two days, we did seventy four tickets, like I I saw the numbers, I was like. That's more than, you know, why am I hearing this? I think that if we posted some of that also on social media, that would only do good. Because it could serve as a deterrent and it's not, you know, it's like this is us, these are, this is your police force. You know, enforcing the the laws and keeping us safe and I I think that we always stand to.
I I agree with you and I think that it's a, but not the post of one.
Right, 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 but again, putting something like that out helps get the word out there.
We have forces, you know, this, obviously, if there's more important things, they can't be out giving tickets, you know, if they're for arrests that they have. I tell people that all the time, you know, our police. You know, when they have, they they prioritize and they have the time to get tickets, they're out there, but there's a lot of things that are. Your attention. Uh, okay, so the next agenda item is the review pay plan for city employees.
Yes, I brought this up uh because I know that the rank and file and I have, and it was particularly locked in on public works. I know a few years back. But we haven't given them an outright raise in several years. I just thought I'd put that out there for consideration, council board. These are people who make this town or break this town. And risk would slow us, they get out there and do a heck of a job, of course, they need to be paid. I'll leave it there.
So you're saying.
We should consider for the next budget coming forward, not this one. But that we should consider. Was the board raised for city employees?
What would you say to, is everybody on board for willing and prepared for for the next budget is um a comparison of where our city. Um, stands compared to other cities in South Florida.
Yes.
For, you know, for positions. So let me know, I I don't think we want to be the best paid, but we certainly don't want to be in the bottom of the row either. We're right, we're the county, so you know, but cities. Something like that, so we can see how we stand. I know retaining employees right now is a problem, so across the board, but that's.
What we've got going on right now with this. This process going forward and I know that. We're gonna receive some of that forward.
But I think the best we can do is, you know, make sure that we're comparable, I think we're a great workplace to provide. You know, it's a nice city, it's a nice place to be. You know, we have a lot of benefits, you know, we just want to be comparable. Parents, so we can retain employees, the good employees and attract employees who need it. Um, okay, so items M and N.
So I brought this up because I think that it's very important. To appoint members towards that are in compliance with our city, because it's a privilege to serve your city. Uh, I do think, an example, if you're gonna appoint somebody to serve on the code compliance board. I think that they they should be in compliance with the code as well. Because it becomes to the public eye very hypocritical and they're not gonna take our board serious. Um, could it happen, maybe fall off track or maybe you fall out of compliance with code? Maybe, but at that point, if you're serving on the on the code compliance board and you fall out of being within line and. I think there's a split, a recent chapter, you're gonna follow the code that you serve, but that's just a simple. A simple example. Well, so what you do is, if, for example. Um, I told him, hey, I wanna appoint A, B, and C, um, can you make sure, it's just like an internal thing. Make sure they're, you know, okay with the city, if they have any open violation, they have them come to compliance or whatever to be able to serve your city, it's just common sense. You want somebody sound serving your board.
So you're suggesting that they be vetted, but.
Yeah, yeah, because right now what we do is, we just say, hey, I wanna appoint such and such, and then the letters go out and then we just, it's a basic, you know.
But are you, I mean, I'm not sure, other than. Saying that they don't have an open permit out or an open violation.
Well, I guess, but I didn't mean. Code compliance.
What else would they be out of compliance with? It's a code things, right?
No, no, just any board, they just want across the board and any of the the board, I think that. Overall, you should just move and stay in the way of the city to be able to serve.
I think, I think in most cases, anyone up here is not gonna fall. Below the line of demarcation in terms of appointing somebody, it's not. Okay, well then, obviously, there's an example that you're.
Yeah, but and you know what, it brings up, like, you learn from something. And then you take the proper route to make it more sensible. So I think, you know, we don't really do anything, so, I mean, we don't even do plan of serving, if I was campaigning and everything, I didn't even just. Um, I I'm a decent person, but. Yeah, okay, yeah, but and it's up to the voters to choose who sits on the day is, but I think just maybe some simple betting. But other than we'll serve the city.
I guess, um, other than I can see if you're saying make sure that they don't have any uh code violations.
Code violation.
What else would be?
Or just not even standing, it could be um open fees that need to be paid, uh. I don't know, just basic things, if you have. Um, maybe it doesn't work for all the boards, but I would like to see where they have a clean slate with the city to serve for the city.
Like you walked in on your bar tab, the Woody's or something? I'm not trying to be funny.
No, we're just trying to see other than, I guess I'm I'm asking other than code compliance, if they don't have open code and they don't have any open fees that are to say. Have a business out of your home, I can see that you have. Business out of your home and you owe an obligation.
You're good with the city, you can serve.
But we probably need to be more specific as to what things they would love, because just saying. Is kind of fraud, so perhaps that of make sure there is no no violations.
Maybe just. Unless you did like a real background check, which costs money, I mean, somebody could be like. You know, be behind on uh on on child support payments or have a bench. But what I'm saying is that like, you could not have any outstanding fees with the city and put them on the board, they could have a bench board, right? So what I'm saying is that. Like, like you could not have any outstanding fees with the city. And then that that means you're vetted to be on the board and they could have a bench board or something like that, like if you're not. What I'm saying is that like we're, we're choosing what to vet them on and it's very kind of superficial things and I don't know that it'd be, there could be something. That more egregious, so.
I would, I would think also, I mean, it's kind of incumbent upon each of us when we're appointing someone to the board to. You know. To do the, and you know, you're appointing somebody, but but I, that said, if I'm appointing someone to. Um, the ecology board. Um, if they have some code violations, I don't know how that impacts their ability to be on the code. You know, on the ecology board, I think, um, I'm just wondering, it's like, I'm appointing them to be on the ecology board and they have code violations that they're dealing with with city. That's between the city and and them, but. So perhaps specifically code enforcement board, I think that that. Would make sense, you know, if you're on the code enforcement board and you're, you know.
But also the conflict of interest.
Right, conflict of interest and, you know, and vote, so I can see that specifically that are asked another.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know I'm specific because I wanted to generalize, but.
But I think in that sense, that probably. Is there another example of another board that you think that there would?
Um, I don't get any go.
You know, certain verbiage is you wanna put in there to warrant conflicts of interest, so it's just making sense. So that might be just if that, and let's think about this, because I think these are the kind of things that we're actually, you know, they make. Sense to all of us, but then there may be some, and perhaps I didn't weigh in on this. But perhaps for code enforcement, let's give it some thought. Present a better future meeting, if that's something we're gonna revise the code enforcement for the board itself, saying a person that served on this will not happen. Now, that doesn't mean they might have some in the future, you know, but at least we're not appointing a, but. Probably, there might be an easier way to do this, but yeah, let's give it some thought, is just let's tell board members when you appoint somebody to the code enforcement board. Have city clerk, when you notify them that this say, you know. Uh, remember that you you need to check to make sure they don't have any open code violations, that's that's simple. And then the right, the council person themselves would check with the city manager or the permitting and, you know, I don't think that we need to write this.
Because somebody wanted to serve on the ecology board and they're using plastic straws. They can't be on the ecology board because of that, because this is inappropriate, right?
You know, can you look into this person, make sure they're okay with the city and just go thinking about this couple of people and. You know, I just wanna make the right choice, I just wanna select someone that's sound for the board.
We've been here a long time, a little eleven, it doesn't hurt.
Which makes sense because it's a quasi judicial board and. Uh, Heidi, did you wanna weigh in?
So real quick, I'm I'm happy to work with you, vice mayor, and if you, if you'd like to draft an ordinance. Um, I'm I'm happy to work with you and and look at examples from other cities. Uh, I think as far as as code enforcement boards. Uh, we can look at any specific requirements for that type of board, most, many cities that I I looked at. Have general um general requirements for their boards. And some even go as far, I I think uh our city clerk may be familiar with the process used as well in Color Bay. Where um the council nominates um board members and then it's. Basically, uh, an approval process by the city council. Um, I I think very rarely, if ever, does anyone contest who's being put on a board. But it is sort of a a process that you have the opportunity to look at um individ- individual nominees uh resumes. And then you vote on, you know, and ratify who's gonna be on that board. Um, so that's one type of process, I'm sure there's a million other ways of doing this, uh, and just keep in mind that a lot of cities. Use a magistrate for code enforcement, so they don't run into the issue of having a uh a city resident. Who may have code enforcement issues, being the one adjudicating these issues, so it's usually a. An un, but it's a disinterested non-city resident that's generally appointed as. As the magistrate, so you, so you avoid some of those issues, so I'm happy to to work with you, vice mayor, and and come up with a solution to to this.
I mean, I would say for the code enforcement, I really don't wanna. Be looking at somebody who's on another board as to your code violations instead, you know, digging that up, it's between them and. And the permitting department and then all of a sudden I get in the middle of that because I'm the one that appointed them, you know what I'm saying, I agree. I have like a common sense from internal. And I think um some of the things too is, you know, the the. You know, um. And I'm not sure if there's a a board member who is not complying with their duties, I know if it is certain meetings. Or they're violating other things like sunshine law or the things that they need to be removed, just because it reflects the city, it affects the other. Uh, board members, um integrity of the board and board members, but I think that's already there.
Mayor, I have a request related, but kind of on the other end of the spectrum. I've I've done a pretty good job of filling all the openings that I had, uh, because people had uh had turned down and everything. Uh, the one that I'm, I just, uh, the architectural review board, I have the only two architects that I know. Are Val Soler and Mark Scavutta, we're both already on there, I've even asked uh the chair of the board, Mark. Like, can you recommend somebody, you know, and I I can't get anybody, I would take somebody that uses asbestos straws, like, like, at this point. I I open it up to you guys, I've exhausted, I've exhausted my ability to find an art, I I think it should be an architect. But if anybody knows.
Benny, Benny, Benny Bishetner, Southeast Design.
Um, I actually, it was funny, because I have asked four, you know, because I'm here still trying to figure out some, that's only what I need. So I was gonna ask Shannon, I don't know if you wanna pick back on the other, we have a meeting this morning, where she goes out and she puts an ad looking for uh. To appoint members for one, two, three, or such and such.
You know, we just put out there these city positions.
I'm at a loss.
You don't even have to say for what groups, just say for right now, um, you know, we have openings on boards for the, you know, for architectural review, if you're interested. Um, it should go to city park and then she can let this person know and that way you get the information on who's available, that way. It's not deciding, I want that person to sound like you, you know, you can issue that buffer.
But again, somebody, somebody that goes on the architectural review board does not necessarily have the gardens, it could be someone's contractors in the business or. Something related.
I think that would be great to have for advertise it and perhaps the city, if there's other openings on other boards, just.
We've explored the campaign of putting it out, we've received applications. But there are particular boards that are already full, that people are interested in serving, um, but we'd rather have patients, but architectural.
I also think that that should be per group. Because I, I know one, I don't know one, it advertised and I'm looking for somebody for college.
You guys don't remember that architectural review was one that was on shopping block and then we pulled it off and. Uh, they haven't, they haven't met in a long time and so, but just appealing to.
Okay, uh, so I think, oh, the last item. Yes, yes, and and then I just wanted to kind of, have this opportunity to update everyone, um, I don't know. Everyone in the council is aware that the city, a long time ago, where I was on the council, but I was facing probably uh. Councilman Best was on the council here this time, has um uh. Explored the possibility of creating a quiet zone at the train crossing over here in North Wilk, Louisiana, uh, you know, that train passes at all hours of the night and it's this large. Road blowing part and um William, uh, you can probably fill them in for us to what.
Well, we, um, originally, we had a study done and unfortunately, the way it works is that you can't just put one. Quiet zone in our area, it has to be a half mile range. So it turns out the door, uh, the door, the whole one high up here, one in Benelli. I think it's a total of five zones with how that needs to be done in order to do the quiet. And the cost of that is close to three hundred dollars. So, uh. Ask, we met a laptop. Tried to work with the state, apparently, uh, with that, no, no grant funds coming from. Federal government for quiet zones. Uh, so he's tried to follow up on it and uh, because we couldn't get the other cities to want to know. He's like, you, you're welcome to do it, but you don't have to come up. So it was up, it wasn't coming up the entire amount and uh. That's what I'm saying, but I don't know if they were to find the. Funding from the federal.
And I also seen the wall on the, on the panel with manager saying, I think the railroad intended one. Yeah, and and of course, you're dealing with a nineteen forty railroad event, which you're not gonna touch, that's the best. But. Two or three weeks later, they refitted their engines with three horns instead of two. I I thought they were getting back at us for that, you know, they're trying to pull an additional, yeah, now they're coming through there with these three air horns. A lot louder than it used to be.
Yes.
Well, that's what the other complaints of, we're getting late, not the horns or so, but.
What the trains like coming together, like being put together on the high landing yard and and it's happened.
And I I told mayor, I think maybe because of the supply chain, so.
So. So I was just wanted to um see if we're all in agreement is um to re uh. Explore the possibility of going to the quiet zone, my understanding is there's some grants available now. For creating these quiet zones, I have again, Medley have been really clear, they're not gonna take for it, they're fine if you wanna do it for the signals, the way. The, let me see, the thing requires, and I guess it understands the train comes very fast, you can't be. You know, this is noise, I can blow the horn here and I can't hear and I can't, you know, it's kind of like. Uh, a zone that they enter and then they stay quiet for, you know, good ways. So um to re-explore and just get those grants available for that or some other way that we can get that done, I. You know, it's a disturbance for our neighborhood, I guess we all bought in areas where the train's there, but it's day, day and age. You know, there's gotta be a better way.
We'd love to bring her to take a look at it, that's a good idea.
Yes, perhaps, and and um I reached out to one of the vice presidents at MC about that, you know, about exploring that. He said that there's those grants available, so we'll try to get that, yeah, and then the other thing is if it claims about. These, the rail yard, there seems to be an increased noise, you're hearing it, council like this. You know, just these backup alarms late at night, uh, the B P B, the backup alarms and the, they create the rail yard.
Right, you do hear, but it's just. Well, folks that move in like they've been there like a year.
You know, it's funny, I was at downtown Doral, two weeks ago, I've been around a restaurant and it's that whole busy area, there's lots of nice restaurants and the planes. Just keep coming, whatever, and I'm like, nobody notices this, it's like, I'm the only one that's noticing these planes every, you know.
If it isn't one thing, it's another.
It doesn't bother anybody though, they're, you know. Um, okay, so um, that is it, thank you, you know what, we did it in three hours, that was a lot.
And we covered a lot of ground.
We covered a lot of ground, I think, um, you know, we're kind of all in still with. With um important issues, see, of us and. Thank you so much. Like Councilman Best said, it's um, it's hard to think how much time you spend of time on council, if you're thinking about it, you're, even if you're not active, you have a meeting. Like Councilman Fest said, it's, uh, it's hard to think how much time you spend, uh, time on the council, if you're thinking about it, you're, even if you're not actively at a meeting. Oh.
Not official, just.
That's right. Uh, Billy Bay used to always do this, always could, I always stand to prepare myself, and I would always, like, jump.